Good morning, everyone. Be calling a work session for January 7th, 2025 to order. If you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The United Republic of America stands one nation under God, in this world where the 人民共和国是我们的祖国。The flag of the United States of America is the symbol of our shared interests among all countries.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is approval of a work session agenda. Sub motion by Commissioner Medina.
Sir.
Issued by Commissioner Shali. Do we have any discussion? Seeing all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have anyone for public input? We have no one for public input, so moving on to presentations.
Mr. Chairman, CHMS here, so we can roll them to February for their coroner duty. And also on item B, we had a scheduling conflict with Dr. Fox, so we have him on the February agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we don't have any presentations on the work session agenda. Moving on to county reports. We have a report, DWI and prevention program administrator, Mr. Graves.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioners, and welcome to our new Commissioners. Just to give you an update, I know some of the new Commissioners may not be familiar with our program and what we do, so I put together a small PowerPoint that we report to DFA to give you a better understanding. So this is for our second quarter. Some of our outreach that we did was, we worked with YSAP and CHI for Snow Middle School Prevention Day. We also were in Cobra Schools for the driver's ed component, the DWI section that we teach as well. We had 20 students that we saw in the Cobra High School. Three different trunk or treats in October at La Plata Women's Club, and also we had an outreach in Cliff. In November, I attended the National Alliance to Stop Impaired Driving in Arlington, Virginia. During that time, I was able to attend the Mad Cannibal Vigil at the National Mall to raise awareness to drunk driving, made a lot of good connections in Arlington, and even met up with our judicial liaison for our state in New Mexico. Our digital footprint, we're reaching out to people on Facebook and just started up on Instagram. We're up to about 180 followers on Facebook, so we're gradually increasing there. And we've also reached out in the realm of geofencing. So instead of traditional advertising that we do through paper and on social media, we're also reaching out through apps on cell phones. So for this first quarter, we reached over 1,700 people. That's a major increase from last quarter. We were only at about 700. So we're gradually increasing there as well. To give you an idea of our numbers with Cory Cantinas, we had 156 that we tracked, that we were able to log through the reporting that I receive, and that's picking up to and from local bars and establishments that sell alcohol. We are running an ad campaign with Cory Cantinas and Cory Caminos. The coasters that you see in front of you there have been distributed to the golf park, I'm sorry, the golf course, the top room there, Little Toad Creek, as well as the Wrangler. And those coasters offer a free ride to Cory Cantinas on Fridays and Saturday nights. We have 85 clients that are in treatment at the moment. Six of those are in residential treatment, and those clients come to us from our compliance, which is the probation side of our program. Right now, we have 187 clients that are active on probation with us. In the first, or the second quarter, we had seven, or I'm sorry, 11 people completed successfully, three unsuccessful. So our program rating right now for that quarter was 72% completion rate, and that's higher than our yearly average that we run around 60 to 70%. Just a breakdown of our fees that we collect for those that are on probation with us. And then also our ankle monitoring that we do as well.
Can you go back, please?
Yeah.
On the fees?
Yes. So 8,800, which is a little bit lower due to December. We usually see a decrease in fees. Probation fees and screening fees go to pay the insurance and benefits for our compliance officer, as well as a portion of my fees as well, insurance and fees that we obtain. Cory Cantinas fees are those fees that we collect for a portion of the rides here, and that is used for funding of our program that is beyond what DFA allows. Things for like food for meetings and candy for events and stuff like that for the children that we interact with. We had 14 people assigned to ankle monitoring with our program, and 10 completed in the quarter, all of them successfully. And then lastly, we did a food, canned food drive for El Refugio for the month of November, where we waived our probation fees for clients that made a donation of five non-perishable items, and we were able to collect over 200 canned goods for added. And then I stand for, just one more second here. So upcoming events, I'll be attending the legislative conference in January. We will be hosting a compliance ad hoc for our affiliate here in February, the 19th and 20th. And then we also will be having DWI Day at the Roundhouse in February on the 28th, where we will have all the counties represented as well. Being the vice chair for the affiliate, I will be attending all those events, and then I'm also the chair for the prevention ad hoc, which will be leading the DWI Day at the Roundhouse. I stand for any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to next director's report, Cory Caminos, Ms. Kim Lamias, Director.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Welcome, new Commissioners. We started our new fiscal year in October, so this is my first quarterly report. We had our biennial site visit in late October, which is DOT's audit of our overall operations. We haven't received any feedback yet, but I expect to have that report by the end of this month, so I will have those results ready for you with my next quarterly report. Also in October, we provided park and ride transportation for Embers Valley Harvest Fest. We had 104 riders for that event. We had 50 passengers for Cory Cantinas on New Year's Eve, which was less than we would like to see, but not unexpected since it was on a weekday. I, in December, I presented, in December, I presented to the Southwest Regional Transportation Planning Organization for our 2026 grant. They do a rating and rankings on the needs of our transportation here in that area. I won't have results for that probably until April. That's going to be part of our DOT packet when they approve our funds for 2026, but I'll be bringing that to you as soon as I receive that. In our first quarter, we provided a total of 19,698 rides. This is an increase of 2,031 rides over our first quarter of last year, which is encouraging growth. 10,581 of those rides were here in Grant County. This quarter, we drove 54,908 miles and were en route for 948 hours. That's all I have, but I stand for any questions?
Thank you, Kim. Moving on to our next report, it's going to be our county fire chief, Roger, Mr. Graves, Chief.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Welcome to our new Commissioners. So I'm the Grant County Fire Chief, Roger Groves. I oversee the operation of our eight volunteer fire departments that are under the county, as well as the aircraft rescue and firefighting team that is located at the Grant County Airport. I'm the chief for that team as well. We have currently 190 volunteer firefighters in the county, roughly. They meet on Monday nights. I don't know if they voted in any new ones last night. And approximately 35 support team members throughout the county at the various departments. We also have 90 individual firefighting apparatus and command vehicles throughout the county. There are 21 fire stations that are under the county that are strategically placed throughout the county and the various fire districts. At the Grant County Airport, we have four, including myself, certified aircraft rescue and firefighters. Right now, currently, we have one R F truck engine at the airport with another that is being built as we speak and should arrive later this year, giving us an additional response vehicle at the airport. Our total calls for 2024 that were reported through central dispatch, we had a total of 1,387 with 261 fires, and that would include structure fire, wildland, car fires. Our EMS calls totaled 1,061 that were dispatched to our volunteers, and 65 other calls, which are service call, possibly false alarm, cat in the tree, which we actually do get those, those kinds of things. At the Grant County Airport, we reported zero fires and/or crashes of aircraft in 2024. And just some of the things I'm working on quickly here, I recently completed work on the waiver for our works capacity test, which is a training we provide for wildland Working with our volunteers to get an understanding of what kind of equipment needs there are, what they already have. Continuous training in our volunteer departments. We are having some trainings in the future that will include our municipal fire departments if they wish to participate. We certainly hope they will, and we invite them to. I did meet with the state fire marshal's office in the latter part of 2024, and we're establishing a structural training curriculum so that we can improve our structural firefighting throughout our volunteer departments in the county. Currently, we're adding a SCID unit to our county side-by-side that will also present another firefighting apparatus that I will be transporting to wildland fires as needed or rescues in the forest. We can potentially transport, say, a victim from the forest if they fall in, out to where the ambulance will meet us, things of that nature. And that's arriving this week, so I'll be busy working on getting that set up and ready to go. And I've been helping the various volunteer departments with equipment and grants as they become available. So I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Questions, Commissioner?
I do have a question. Mr. Groves says, what is the SCID unit?
The SCID unit, I'm sorry, is a, it's an insert that will go in our, in our UTV, our side-by-side. It'll carry 85 gallons of water. It has a pump on it, and there's an area where we can, we could load a patient for a litter or a gurney if we needed to transport somebody out, say, from the forest. And that goes in the bed of our side-by-side. It'll be inserted into that piece of equipment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Medina.
Chief, I had the opportunity to meet with the municipal fire chiefs, and it seems that there are some concerns about interacting together. Can you reach out to them and make sure that we're all on the same page regarding dispatch, response? Those vicious rumors are still flying around about you can't respond, and it needs to stop.
Right.
It's about service to our community. I don't care who gets there first, the color of the truck, I don't care. Our responsibility is make sure that somebody gets there that can help the individual that needs the help. They've got some huge concerns about dispatch. They've got huge concerns about not interacting with other departments, and as a community, we need to work together. If you can, please reach out. I know the mayors and the council are getting ready to meet regarding this issue, but I just, if you can, please reach out, and let's get on the same page, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have recently been on some incidents with responders from Hurley and Santa Clara. I have a pretty good relationship with them, but I understand what you're talking about.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to the next report, it's going to be our detention center administrator,
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. I'd like to welcome aboard the new Commissioners. My name is Joseph Andazola. I'm the warden of the Grant County Detention Center. I'm the one that administrates operations of the detention center. Operations of the detention center is a quite significant effort that takes a lot of teamwork and communications. Currently, the county can hold up to 95 detainees in the detention center. Over the last year, though, we've reported numbers up to 100 and 110 sometimes. Currently, today, our population is 88. Of December 31st, 2024, our population was 90 detainees, with an average population of, for December of 89. I also am in charge of 35 county employees, which consists of 22 detention officers, four corporals, four sergeants, lieutenant of operations, a lieutenant of administration, a training sergeant, an executive assistant, and also a part-time presumptive eligibility coordinator. The presumptive eligibility coordinator reviews over every detention center detainee detained in the facility and intake, and makes sure that they have a current active insurance. And if they don't, they help them see if they qualify for insurance, and then before they're released, they have insurance that the way they could do our handoffs to agencies within our community. Currently, we have four officer openings with five officers in training. I am working with HR to schedule interviews. We do have interviews scheduled for January 14th. The way that detention centers run, it's my job to be aware of any updates in law or legislation passed in the state of New Mexico, and also participate in our detention affiliate and see any best practices or changes. With that, I update our policies and procedures and make any changes necessary. We have 104 policies and procedures at the detention center, and we also have nine post orders. Also, I'm a member of the board of the professional standards committee of the detention affiliate. They're the ones that run the accreditation program within New Mexico. We currently in the middle of accreditation process. There are 211 standards in accreditation process, and what standards are, it's a basic operation of the jail, so to say, best practices, that if you do those 211 best practices, your jail should have no problems. And it ranges anywhere from hiring to training to intakes of detainees, to their files, to the medical process, to the medical treatment of detainees, to the areas that detainees are housed, how big they have to be, hours out they get for recreation, meals, how many calories should be in the meals, how you store your food, the temperature of the waters, the temperature of the meals, so many different things in the 211 standards. So right now, we are currently in the process of the accreditation process. I'm going to meet with the accreditation audit team in the legislative session here in a couple of weeks and try doing mock audit, possibly spring, early summer, and then have our final audit probably early fall or late fall, and hopefully we get accredited. I think our team's been really working really hard on that. Also, it's my job to work with the county manager, the finance, and different agencies within the county. The detention center is quite significant budget within the county budget. Work on any things that we need from new equipment to equip, to new vehicles, to personnel, to training. Also, we do have contract staff in the facility. We do contract medical services and food services. We have four food service workers that provide three meals a day, breakfast, lunch, and date, and dinner. We have contract staff for medical services of approximately 13 personnel, including a medical provider that sees the inmates, treats them, and prescribes medication. Our medical staff consists of RNs, LPNs, paramedics, EMTs, and a mental health specialist. As of Thursday, January 2nd, 2025, we have zero COVID positives. Also, we are in charge of several grants. We have the RISE grant from the state of New Mexico, which is Reach, Intervene, Support, and Engage. I think most of the Commissioners were here for the presentation, not only here, but in the TUCASA program, where we work with detainees within the facility, work with them while they're incarcerated, then develop a discharge plan for when they leave the facility, to have one handoffs to different agency areas for them to continue treatment. Our RISE program in December had 22 RISE participants, with eight in the facility and 14 in the community. Also, we work with various agencies, law enforcement, sheriff's office, sharing intel, work with the different courts, magistrate, municipal, district attorney's office, district court judges, and maintaining the detainee files, making sure that they go to court on time, and then also auditing the files, which could be a quite difficult task to see about release dates. Also, we do have within our detention officer a special response team which we created. I'm overseeing that currently till we get more training. Currently, we have Lieutenant Missy Alrios as the commander of the special response team and Sergeant Ganader. I've sent them to various trainings. They did go to operator school in the El Paso County Sheriff's Office. I did send them to a two-week training in the Dona Ana Detention Center, where they're trained on basic operator school also, from a company out of Florida that trains detention centers all over the United States. Also, I work with different county departments, such as maintenance, IT, to make sure our facilities keep current running. We do have over 90 cameras within the facility and a PLC that operates the doors and the gates, that we do work with IT to develop a contract with other outside companies to do maintenance on the camera systems and also on operating systems. We get with maintenance too, to provide preventive maintenance. You could assume, just like everybody else, we have plumbing issues, heating issues. We did develop a five-year plan when this administration took over with the county, changing over computers, radios, equipment, security equipment. We worked really hard with the commission and the county manager. We replaced all the HVAC systems recently. We replaced the water boils, the water heaters recently also. Replaced all the door sliders. We have a five-year plan, which I'll be sharing with you here shortly. It's continuously a live plan and updated every year. Other projects, our portable building is in, and we're going to schedule a placement of the building on the foundation. I'll let the foundation is set. I'm working with HR and sergeant and corporal promotions. We did do interviews, and we did do testing. We should be finishing those up here within the next two weeks. I think it's very important and significant to have those supervisors in place with that rank and structure to carry on with our accreditation and operations. We do have a special response team tryouts. We did have a physical fitness test, and we're going to have the oral boards this week to pick new operators for our team. We're also working with maintenance in the county and a shower project to redo and reseal all showers in the facility. Key event dates, per state law, it's a state law that the commission inspect the detention center every year, so talking to the county manager. And with our new Commissioners in place, we're going to do that inspection here in February or March of this year. So we'll be scheduling that and the time to be announced. And of course, our legislative session is January 21st through the 24th, where our detention affiliate comes together. I know a big process we're going to talk is medicated assistant treatment, which is a very big topic in the detention centers and the prisons. Our facility is one of the first to start a MAP program here, and we continue in our MAP program. I'm hoping to any questions, and I look forward to having you guys tour the facility and giving you a thorough tour and explanation and going over our five-year plan.
Thank you. Looking here at your report, four officer openings, are we still having that problem with turnover there, people leaving?
Yes, I think one of the biggest problems we're having now is retention, which I've met with the county manager, and she and HR are working on that and looking at different ways to hopefully get some retention within the facility. I know a lot of it, it's just a different significance, the difficulty of the job, somewhat of the pay. One of the things that our detention affiliate's talking about also is the retirement. As it, as you know, it's been climbing every year, and I think if we work on getting that retirement back to that 20 years and 10 months, it would attract more people because to start a career, I think you have to do three years is quite significant, especially in a difficult environment as that. We're boosting our training, trying to get it to where we have fully staffed, that we were not putting out our staff with a lot of overtime, 16-hour shifts. I think if we work together, we could get some retention going and get people to stay. I know that in this economy, people are fighting for jobs, and pays are getting risen, and we just lost one to security at the mine. We do support people's endeavors, though. If you want to come and become law enforcement, federal, military, we do support that, and you say, come learn for most for three or four years, and we'll give you that solid foundation to move forward. We do support that in people's dreams. However, sometimes you come, and like me, I fell in love with the career and stayed at the detention center. I'm starting my 23rd year as of this year at the detention center, so I think if we work together, we could find sound solutions to keep that retention in our facility.
Well, you know what I'm thinking more, because detention officer, that's, that's a rough job. People don't understand that. I mean, you're basically law enforcement to me. You want to go, you have downtime, you go eat with your family, you go eat, you go get a cup of coffee, you could do that, you drive around, break it up a little bit. Detention centers totally a different animal in my eyes. I think that, you know, it does take special people to do that, to be a detention officer. But the other part of me is, you know, we pay overtime just because of how short it is. It's not going to end, but I would like to see our county administration, and I'm looking at our county manager and deputy county manager, I guess, looking at wages. I mean, I think that's a big part of this. I know that the county has excellent benefits, and a lot of our employees don't understand the 12, 13, 14% every year that the county has to put in to keep them at that 100% insurance, which is a great benefit. But I think that we need to come up with ways on retention, and I think a lot of that has to do with pay. You know, we notice, and I've noticed since I've sat up here, is our deputies and, you know, some of our employees, not all of them, keep getting wage increases, and we're getting there with them, but at the other end, sometimes I feel that our detention center's not there. I'm thinking that we need to start concentrating with our, on our detention center to keep you the officers you need and the specialized training that you need. So that's just, those are just my thoughts and my, you know, what I'm thinking, but, you know, I'll leave that up to the county staff, county manager, and finance to, to see what they can come up for us here in the new budget. I understand there may be unions involved, and it's hard, but at the end of the day, I don't think a union would, I would hope that they would understand what we're doing. So, but thank you.
I think meeting with the county manager, we see the significance of that, we're working on that. I do appreciate that, since I've taken over the administration of the detention center, working with the county manager, we have risen the pay over $3 in some sense per hour within that time, so I think we're just going to continue looking at that and raise the pay and working together to make it doable where that retention takes place.
Well, I'm glad you guys are working on it. Thank you. Commissioners, any other question? Commissioner?
Thank you for the report. I just was curious how often you have to go through that accreditation process?
So the accreditation process- So the accreditation process, uh, your first accreditation, when you initially apply, you have to provide proof of practice for one year. So after that one year, you, you have to get audited every three years, and you have to provide proof of practice for three years. So since this is our first year, we're providing proof of practice for one year, and then once we're accredited, we, this, the cycle turns every three years, and you have to provide proof of practice for three years on all two hundred and eleven standards.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I'll be there.
Next report's going to come from our emergency manager, uh, Mr. Scott Fuller.
Happy New Year, and welcome, uh, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Flores, and Commissioner Shelley. Um, I'm Scott Fuller. I'm the emergency manager for the county and, um, in charge of the Office of Emergency Management. And it's toward to prepare a little brief presentation of kind of what we do. Some, and at its core, the Office of Emergency Management, uh, is charged with maintaining, enhancing the framework within which our community reduces its vulnerability to hazards and appropriately responds to emergencies and incidents and disasters. Uh, the mission of the Office of Emergency Management is to coordinate, um, the emergency management program to prepare, prevent, plan, and recover from an all-hazards event. The Office of develops, maintains, implements, and has the ability to direct, control, manage, and coordinate emergency operations and maintain in coordination with municipal, state, federal agencies, and also nonprofits and private sector agencies. To accomplish this mission, um, you have to make sure the county is prepared for its emergencies, um, all, and make sure all, all incidents, uh, in the county are managed in accordance with NIMs and ICS principles, um, make sure there's continuity of operations planning in place, which is essential to ensure that public services are available during and following emergencies. Um, incident monitoring, uh, to monitor local, regional, national incidents and weather for their impact on the county in, in order to provide vital information and, uh, warning. And if you know, I've been putting out, uh, weather briefings for the last few days concerning the, uh, the snow event, the potential snow event Nicole Morgan will have in the next few days, so I do that on a continual basis. And the other thing is to develop, maintain, and coordinate the emergency management plans for the county, and also, uh, to make sure I have all the plans for the, some of the other entities in the area, like, uh, all the plans for Freeport-McMoRan, the plans for PNM, and, uh, a lot of the EAPs, the emergency action plans for the dams in the, in the county. Um, now, if there ever was an incident that required a large emergency response, you know, part of the job is to make sure there's, you know, there's a coordinated emergency response, uh, and recovery. Uh, the first thing is to make sure that we have an established emergency operations center, and I'm sure you're mentioning what that is, and during a major event, the, the emergency operators, the EOC is the focal point for information, coordination, and, uh, research, um, resource request and decision-making. Second part of that is public warning, uh, that, and to make sure there's a coordinated, um, provision to make sure vital warning and information is, is provided to the public, and that's accomplished through many avenues. The main one we have now in place is IPALS, and, um, I don't know if y'all familiar with that, Integrated Public Alert Warning System, and that's kind of like an Amber Alert, and that could be sent out to the whole county, or it could be geo-fenced to, uh, municipalities. It just depends on how it's needed. Um, also, we will be putting out, uh, notices on, on the county's Facebook page and on the county's website, and I've worked with, uh, Adam here to make sure there's a banner there that, that'll go across on the website, and when we have incidents, that'll be right there when you go to the webpage. I've also partnered up with the National Weather Service, uh, SkyWest Media, and, uh, actually Western New Mexico University to use their platforms to get the message out to. Um, with all that, there's other functions and activities that, uh, this office does. Uh, one is to respond to emergencies and disasters within the county and the region. As you know, to have good neighbors, you got to be a good neighbor, so we all try to kind of help each other. Um, I attend all, in, in, all, the, all hazard training and, uh, uh, and activities in the area too. Um, I also apply for, uh, multiple grants. Currently, I, I'm managing right now six grants and have a seventh one I'm awaiting an award notice on. Um, I'm in charge of, uh, entering to make sure that all are mutually agreements. We have them with the other counties, and they're all current. Um, I also ta, take charge of maintaining the county's communication system and its ten, uh, repeater sites or communication sites. And lastly, I also manage the code enforcement for the county. So, um, I had some notes from our last director's meeting, and really hadn't a lot changed since, uh, since our December meeting. Uh, we did get the draft, uh, version of the haz, hazard mitigation plan. I don't know if y'all got a chance to look through that. I read through it all and provided all the comments back to H two O for the counties from what, what I felt needed to be changed. I've sent the, um, we finally got the, uh, the fully executed agreement back from the state for the emergency management performance grant, so we finally got that back, and I have submitted the, the first two quarterly reports have been submitted back to the state, and they've accepted those. I have sent the, uh, the signed agreement back to New Mexico Minerals Natural Resources Department for the update of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Hopefully, we'll get the procurement process going on that in the next two months, and I'm still waiting on an award from FEMA and the state for generators for the, I think I'll put in for eleven fire stations and four solar, and four, uh, portable solar generators for our communication sites. So I'm open for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Commissioners. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Shelley?
I have one question. I attended the Wildland, or Fire Seminar or Meeting that we had last year, and a lot of concern was brought up about, uh, properties and code enforcement. Any updates on progress since that meeting?
Yes, um, I think you're, I guess you're referring to the, the junkyard fire from June?
Yeah, and then there were others that...
Yes.
My neighbors even were out where I live in Silver Acres have brought that up as a concern for some, some of the properties out there, and so I'm just curious if code enforcement has been able to make any progress.
Yes, this was just, um, assigned to me a couple of months ago. I do have a lot of ideas, and some of it's going to require your work and, and your, and, and your support, because a lot of the ordinances that we had that were passed in twenty twenty-two concerning abandoned buildings and junkyards, a lot of the enforcement does require the, the, uh, the approval and, and sometimes some resolutions from the board. So I'm looking forward to getting those ready and getting them to you, and see if we can move this forward. I've also, like I said, worked a lot with, uh, New Mexico Department of Environment, um, or with their hazardous waste bureau and, um, their, uh, bulk, uh, waste department on some of the enforcement issues. We, in fact, they've been to the county a couple of times, and we've been to a couple of sites, Silverback Towing, they went through there and did a, did an inspection of that, and a couple of other places the county have been through, and they've, they've been monitoring to clean up that, uh, at the rodeo road fire.
Do we have anyone going out, looking at these yards? I know in the Reno's Valley, we have a couple. Matter of fact, there was a car fire there, uh, a few days ago. Do we have, I understand them looking at, you know, the junkyards that are licensed and, and that have businesses, but do we have anybody just doing an inventory of just our, I don't know what to call, tree mechanics or whatever, that have a lot of carsers? Do we have anybody doing any of that, looking at these?
Not, not right now.
I know we don't have business license.
In reality, none of the junkyards in the county are licensed with the state, and that, that can be an issue, and I'm, I'm looking at from that potential too. None, none of them have followed the proper work that they, the proper paperwork they need to file with the state to be a licensed junkyard. None of them have, none, none of this county has so far.
Yeah, I'd really like to see what we have out there in, in case we have to, you know, whatever we're presented with, ordinances, resolutions, to, to start getting a handle on that. I know I've gotten a few calls and from Silver Acres too, that we haven't, you know, we've been working on, so. Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Flores? Mr. Chair. Commissioner Shelley, thank you for bringing that up with, uh, code enforcement, but I guess my question is to somebody, do, are you the code enforcement officer right now, Mr. Fuller?
Um, no, Lily Fernandez is the code enforcement officer. I just, um, kind of...
Okay. What, I, I guess my question is, um, we don't necessarily just have to look at businesses, but we have to look at properties all along the county, within the county. That was a big issue that was brought up to me, uh, during my campaign, and I know we all share the same sentiment, and I believe, obviously, we're up here for the, to be the voice of our constituents, and I would be not doing my job as a commissioner if I didn't bring that up, but I would like to see, um, and forgive me, I'm, obviously, I'm new and I'm going to learn the system. However, I, I think I've heard all these things about tourism coming to Grant County and recreation and, and things of that ma, of that matter, but it's, it's one thing to bring them here, and then when, when people come from out of town and they see the weeds, not just in the county, but in the city as well. I mean, I, I drive past several restaurants, grocery stores, there's weeds at least three or four feet high. Um, it's, we need to hold not just businesses, but I think we need to hold private residents accountable too, and I think that's what the code enforcement is supposed to do, her scope of duty. I, I would like, uh, a request maybe for the past year, I, number of citations issued, and the disposition on each case, because there is a, a paper trail, obviously, and if, if that code enforcement officer is filing citations or issuing citations, then there has to be a disposition in court, and what's, what's the magistrate court judge doing? Is he or she dismissing citations or, or, or even getting that far? But, um, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Please.
Members on the board, so code enforcement has obviously been a challenge for us. We have one code enforcement officer that, um, handles the entire county. We will be presenting a proposal to you to add an additional officer in the near future. However, the process that we've taken that has proven to be successful in more cases than not is the relationship that, um, Officer Fernandez develops with the individuals. So whenever she receives a complaint, she, um, follows the ordinance as it's laid out. Um, she has a conversation with them, she follows up with them in writing, she sends them letters, she gives them warnings. Um, if we can resolve those instances before they go to court, we're finding that it is a little more successful. What happens once that citation is issued, then it is in the hands of the magistrate judge. We have had some difficulties in the past where the individual who's cited comes up with a million and one excuses, "I can't do it because of this, that, or the other," so they're granted a thirty-day extension, they're granted a sixty-day extension. Um, that extension expires, they go back to court again, same story, they're given another extension. So we try to do as much work in front of issuing that citation to try to clean things up, because once it hits the court, um, it's basically out of our hands. We will compile that report, um, we, we have fallen a bit behind. We do give you a quarterly report, so you can see where the cases are being filed, that, you know, so you know how many is in your district, where some of the problem areas are, um, but we can definitely get you that information, we'll email it to you, but I will tell you it is a monumental task in this county.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could respond, uh, surely, and I get a question, Mrs. Webb.
Sorry.
So the code enforcement officer, is, is, does she have a daily log that she keeps on her activity each day? I, I guess my question is, I, I understand, obviously, the court, and I think we, as a commission, um, me as a citizen, I, I'm going to hold the, the county magistrate accountable as well, because that's what it is, is transparency. And if, if I'm writing a ticket to, to a magistrate judge, and that judge consistently dismisses that ticket for whatever reason, then I, in Grant County, have an option to go to a different judge, and, and then that judge will, will get my tickets from here on out. And it's just a relationship that the officer has to meet with, I mean, uh, get with the judge, but at some point in time, a judge can only dismiss so many tickets. And I think, I think until we hold people accountable, even, even if they do get the two or three tickets, at some point, there's going to be a warrant issued, because there's just so many excuses that a judge can, can receive, but I just would like to see that the activity that's, that's she's doing, the number of contacts, the number of letters she's issuing out, and, um, that way, I can tell my constituents or the citizens of Grant County, "Hey, we're doing that, this is the number of contacts per month, per quarter, whatever, so we are addressing those issues." Now, if, if there is an issue, then we know who to go to next, that'd be the magistrate judge. But, um, yeah, I, I know it's going to be a big task, and I don't expect it tomorrow or whenever, but I, I would definitely like to see that activity from that code enforcement officer.
We can do that, and we can promote that to you, and we are, um, quite a bit behind. Officer Fernandez was out on medical leave for several months, and so we're catching up on a lot of things. Um, I would share a personal issue, um, so I have a horrible code enforcement officer or, um, situation that I look at every day when I drive out of my driveway. Um, you know, went to court, um, warrants issued, the property owner lives in Peoria, Arizona, um, it was rented to people, they left a mess, um, you know, now there's a presale sign out front. So, you know, and it's, and, you know, Lily has spent days and days and days dealing with that mess, and it's halfway cleaned up, and now roofs are falling in, and what do you do then? So then, if you follow the course of our ordinance, like, these are all inhabitable dwellings, they're falling in, then it's on our dime to clean it up. And so then you end up putting this lien on this property, and, you know, this is an elderly lady that lives in another state, and so it's not as easy as it appears on the surface to be able to correct these messes, because you have a lot of situations like that where it might be a renter or something like that. So Scott and I have had, um, some conversations about looking at areas within our ordinances that we can improve, that will give us some more teeth to be able to tackle this from a different aspect, and so Scott has some really good ideas, he has some really aggressive ideas, and I give him, um, credit for that. So we'll be back in front of you with what we think is an appropriate, um, amendments to those ordinances, so, so that we can try to do a better job.
Yeah, I was just waiting for the, for the new commissioners to come on board before I start implementing some of this, and one of the issues, Commissioner Flores, that Commissioner Brown brought up, I mean, he was speaking before he left, is the lack of zoning out here, and that, that makes it hard too with, with lack of zoning, it really does, but that he brought that issue up before he left, and there's a couple of ideas that I had, just a simple one, just, uh, with business licensing. Now, I've talked to Connie about that, and all you need is an MX code tax ID and the appropriate paperwork, and you get a business license, which is nothing, there's no follow-up. I mean, it's simple as, if you got a, if you got a business or a property or a business that's a constant problem, why are we reissuing business licenses to them? I mean, simple things like that. I mean, we should have a clause where if you have, if you have a constant complaint, constant problem with the business, we should not be issuing a business license, cost blunt, should not.
Thank you. You know, along those same lines, I'd like to see that on our animal control officer. Like to see the number of calls, number of citations, what they're doing, um, you know, right down the winter, you know, I just hate going by yards where you have dogs chained up, they have no, nothing, and I brought this up, uh, a couple of meetings back, so I think along those same lines, we need to start doing the same on this side, uh, with the, uh, animal control officer also, and, and, and start looking at that, because, uh, I mean, uh, I'm not saying that they're not doing their job, don't take this wrong, but at the end of the day, we are paying people to do a job, and I'd like to see that they are doing their job, and, uh, I think that reporting that, and maybe you have, and, and, uh, I think the AC, the animal controls officers under the sheriff, correct? I'd like to see that too, and I'd like to see what they're doing and, and some type of remedy on that also.
Chair, will make sure it's in my reports and here, honor.
With my director's report, I'll make sure there's a, there's some numbers on, on, on code enforcement also.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Stevens?
Uh, yes, thank you for your report. I just had one comment and then a question. The comment, I guess, about the, uh, code enforcement issue is, I think it's such a... The comment, I guess, about the code enforcement issue is, I think it's such a complex problem that, uh, there's, there's no avenue, you know, that we shouldn't explore, and I'm, I'm intrigued by maybe the possibility of, um, some public relations kind of advertising, like to, I, I heard what, uh, our county manager said about trying to be proactive and think upstream before it becomes a problem with, um, with, uh, a legal issue. And I know there's a lot of neighbors that, uh, you know, they want to make their yards look better, they just don't really know where to start. And so if we could do some kind of, like, a campaign about, "Want to clean up your yard, but you don't know where to start?" And I'm sure that Officer Fernandez, um, and yourself, you, you have a lot of knowledge about, um, how to direct people, like, resources that they could use. Um, so that was a comment, and then the question was just on emergency planning, and, um, I wondered if you have any regular communication with the schools?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
In fact, I include them in all my, all my weather briefings, and, uh, I guess, I'm, yeah, I'm Mr., I guess, Mr. Alvarez, we, we, we talk quite a bit, so.
All right, thank you. Moving on to, uh, information technology, our director, Mr. Adam.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
And welcome, new Commissioners, Shelly, Flores, and Stevens. My name is Adam Baca, and I'm the IT Director here with Grant County. As the IT Director, I assist with the overall county technology, and making sure that we provide planning, current knowledge, future vision of all the systems that we utilize. I also strive to safeguard these systems and all of the assets that come with it, primarily by identifying possible problems and solving actual security problems. And I, of course, work to protect our systems by defining privileges and access privileges and permissions as far as how much should we be able to access regarding these systems. So some of my typical, typical responsibilities, of course, overseeing all IT operations, which involves the day-to-day troubleshooting and technical issue resolution, monitoring our ticketing system, developing IT strategy, and implementing that strategy throughout the county, focusing on IT projects from beginning to end. I also work on IT compliance, making sure that our IT practices comply with relevant laws and regulations. As far as IT security, I focus on monitoring security events, including intrusion detection, intrusion prevention systems, and determining if security events should be escalated. As regards our IT staff, I supervise our staff. We're currently a team of three at present. Over the last three years, we've been slowly progressing as far as the numbers within our department. Right now, we have myself as the IT Director, we also have a network administrator and an IT specialist. As regards our IT infrastructure, I work on defining the software and hardware that we utilize, as well as the network requirements that we put in place, and performing tests on this hardware and software also. And of course, working on disaster recovery, which means developing and maintaining disaster recovery and business continuity plans, under the assumption things go south regarding our equipment. My responsibilities also include working closely with every other department within the county, and ensuring that we integrate their needs to the overall county, uh, company strategy. Now, as regards my report, right now, we're currently focusing on continuing to virtualize some of the physical servers that we have. Uh, just to very briefly bring you up to speed, we've had several aged physical servers that run applications that we use all the time. And rather than upgrading those physical boxes to new physical servers, I've chosen the route of virtualizing these servers, which ba- basically means that we're grabbing that server infrastructure, we're copying it, and we're placing it, yes, into a new server environment, but it's all via copied files. It's the virtualization of this effort. So we have one large server that is utilizing, uh, all of its space, its networking and its processing power, to bring all of these servers into it, and that's essentially what virtualizing is. So rather than buying a bunch of new servers, we're focusing on bringing them into a couple smaller servers throughout the environment. Uh, things that we're focusing on are, uh, placing redundant equipment in areas where it's much needed. For example, we did that recently here at this building with our firewalls. Our firewalls control a lot of the security, what can and can't happen with that, within our environment. And we're planning on doing just that as well at the detention center here very soon. Uh, we're currently focusing on lending a hand, however possible, with the financial rebuild that we're going through. Uh, what we utilize here is what's called an ERP, which is an enterprise, enterprise resource planning tool. That's provided through Tyler Technologies. That's what allows us to handle all of our HR responsibilities, our financial responsibilities, and, uh, keeping that in track. So right now, we're focusing on a financial rebuild, and I'm, uh, working with Andrea on lending a hand, however possible, in supporting that effort. We're also focusing on, uh, county-wide computer-aided dispatch implementation, commonly referred to as CAD, computer-aided dispatch. And in fact, there's potential that possibly an hour ago, this system went live within our county, and that is monumental. This has definitely been something that's in the works for quite some time, but as of today, we are focusing on utilizing a new computer-aided dispatch system. I've been working closely with our sheriff, as well as other entities within the county, on making sure that this is progressing and moving forward, and primarily from our perspective, that our sheriff's office, as well as others, that will utilize this system, that they have the appropriate access to it. So we've been focusing on that as well. As far as future projects, uh, we definitely have some things on, on, uh, on the agenda. One in particular is the implementation of what I'm calling a backup power management system. Uh, basically, it's a, a system that will allow us to have vision into the backup power whenever we need to utilize it. Uh, we try to connect all of our infrastructure to backup power, and the intention of this is not necessarily to keep the system up completely during power outages, but to allow us to be able to quickly manage them and bring them down gracefully, rather than large servers just turning off. That could be detrimental to the hardware. So with a backup power management system, we'll have the ability to gracefully shut this equipment down in order to preserve its life. As far as key event dates, um, next, here, the week of the twentieth, I, too, will be participating in the legislative conference. I'm the, um, the affiliate secretary for the IT affiliate, so I'll be focusing on putting the agenda together and, uh, putting any notes together and sending that out and dispersing it to the IT affiliate, and of course, taking notes during our meetings as well. So some of the things we primarily focus on, which has been a major relief, is overall communication from the state with all of the counties regarding cybersecurity. So we know that that is a hot topic forevermore, essentially, so it's been, uh, a relief, seeing how this is coming together. So that's my report. I have, uh, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Adam. Questions, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Moving on to the next report is going to be, uh, Mr. Joseph.
Joseph Olgin, he's the Planning and Capital Projects Director.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and, uh, welcome to your report. I wanted to give a high-level overview of our department, you know, a couple of tasks that we do, and then how I fit in with, with, uh, with the county as a whole. So, uh, the planning and mapping department, we do issue floodplain permits, which are required by the Construction Industries Division, uh, when folks are looking to develop, uh, or erect structures on their property. So that's a regular task for us. We do rural addressing, so folks that live in the county, uh, we're responsible for assigning those addresses to them, uh, based on their location, and then part of our monthly task of that is uploading those addresses to the PSAP, the Public Safety Answering Point. So our nine-one-one and, uh, emergency, nine-one-one emergency responders, sheriffs, know where to respond. Um, we also handle land divisions, so when folks come in and they have, you know, say ten acres, and they want to parse that out into a couple of sections for their kids or whatever that looks like, uh, that process is initiated through our department also. Um, and then I work closely with Public Works and the county manager on planning and the execution of projects, um, everything from the capital outlay applications to, uh, project budget and tracking and, and completion of these projects. Uh, regarding our current projects right now, in Mimbres, uh, at the main station and at the Thunderbird Station, we're installing underground water storage tanks. Um, these allow a water reserve in the event of a fire, or those tanker trucks can come and fill up rapidly and, and be reds dispatched to those fires. Um, in North Hurley right now, uh, we're in the process of taking up the old asphalt, uh, reconstruction drive pads along North Hurley, um, installing swales to divert, uh, surface water and get those drainage issues taken care of there, and it'll be a, a nice transformation to that North Hurley. Um, it'll also tie in with the previous projects that have been done there, so basically from Hurley, from the tracks area, if you will, onward, it's all going to be one continuous project from now on, so. Um, we're also working, uh, with the public safety building, uh, renovation right now. We're currently putting together a set of drawings for that, and this would be in the old Aldo Leopold School across the, the parking lot here. That project is going to entail, um, looking at paint, flooring, HVAC, um, so heating, air conditioning systems, so those larger mechanical systems, and, uh, and basic, basically addressing all the interior side of that. If we can, we'll address, uh, uh, exterior parking and whatnot. Uh, we are going to have to reestablish that driveway that was a, a shared driveway with the, um, uh, NBD, so we're going to be working on that as well. Um, the courthouse is another project we have right now, and this project is in the design phase as well, and we have a workshop with the Sixth Judicial Court next week. We've been asked to provide two sets of design development documents, one of which is for the renovation of the current facility, and, uh, part of that, or a main focus of that is addressing ADA deficiencies there. Um, the other set of drawings would be for the construction of a new judicial campus, which would be, um, at the, uh, old detention center, just in that same parking lot, if you will. So we're working on that. Franks and Crum Road, uh, both of those are in Arenas Valley, and we're in the do- design phase of those, and there's no construction money for those, but the design component of that. And so we're looking, we're assembling our set of drawings right now to address pinch points where, you know, there's narrow cross or narrow, uh, sections in the road where to, so want to make it where two vehicles can pass safely, and also address surface water issues there. So, uh, in areas where the water transfers from one side of the road to the other, it has a tendency to wash out, so we're going to be looking at addressing that as well. Um, as far as future projects, um, we're at the start of this legislative session, are getting close to it, so, um, and all these funding cycles start to hit about the same time. So our LGRF, uh, projects are going to be coming up soon. Jason Lockett, our Public Works Director, is probably going to speak to that a little more, but I meet, meet with him and, uh, his road superintendent every couple of weeks. We kind of take a, a snapshot of what the last couple of weeks looked like, and then we start planning out for, for future projects. So right now, we're in that process of getting that list of roads together that we want to apply for this funding for, so we can either do chip seal projects or whatever that looks like to, to keep our roads maintained throughout the county. Um, our colonias projects, we have our twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, our twenty-four projects, of course, include, uh, Franks and Crum Road, and then in addition, North Hurley, so those we're carrying out. And then we're putting together, uh, a list of, uh, projects for our twenty-twenty-five applications, so we're already working into, working for this year and next. And then this month, of course, our sixty-day legislative session kicks off, and I'll be with Mr. Baca and a handful of the other directors at that legislative conference. And then also at the end of the month, uh, is Grant County Days at the Roundhouse, and that's the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth. So that's our opportunity to meet with our legislators, advocate for our community. Uh, education will be there, uh, healthcare, municipalities, of course, local governments, and, uh, of course, we all encourage you, you folks to attend. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
You know, I'll just comment, just remember on the courthouse renovation, I'd like to keep the historic aspect of it. Maybe the definition of historic is not what's in my mind, but, you know, when we talk historic or when we say historic, to me, it's preserving what we have, the old look. You know, I don't like calling something historic, and I always get calls or, because I put my foot in my mouth. You know, when you call historic downtown Silver City, it's not historic anymore to me, because of the changes, you know, as, to me, it's preserving not only the history of what, what was there, but the history of the building, sort of like some of the houses that you have on, on Sixth, Seventh, AB Street, they've done excellent jobs preserving the history, the outside of it. That's my only thing with this new construction, I can see it, but, and I don't know how the other Commissioners feel about this, but, um, and I'll find out soon, probably, but, you know, new construction's fine, but just leave the courthouse, the front, the sides, the way they, they are. That's part of Grant County, it's always been Grant County, and those are my wishes.
I agree, Chairman, yeah, that's, that's definitely a focal point of the downtown area. I think as much as we can preserve that, that would, that would serve the community well, absolutely.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
Go ahead, Commissioner Olgin. I, I had addressed the other previous planning director. Um, I had some people in the Members Valley have concerns about a walking path along Highway Thirty-Five from the school up to what they call the museum up there, it's like about a three-and-a-half mile path. Um, can you reach out to the DOT and see if it's the, our problem, their problem, something along those lines, because when those kids are led out of school, they're kind of walking along Thirty-Five, and it's just kind of a, a dangerous place to be walking, there's not a lot of, and, and I know Commissioner Edwards at the time had a lot of concerns about biking on that road and walking and stuff like that, if we could just look at some option where they could have some ability to walk those kids to school and so forth, please.
Yes, sir. We'll make sure to, to reach out to DOT about that. Uh, I believe Thirty-Five, the state owns that, but we can see if they have any plans for that, and then I'll make sure to report back to you.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's bad enough that the road is very narrow for two vehicles as it is, and I think to, to ask somebody to walk their kid to school on the white line is kind of dangerous, if you could, please. And if you need any support from me, please let me know, reach out, let me know what you need.
Thank you, Commissioner Olgin. Appreciate the comment.
Commissioner Olgin, I've tried that, because it is, when you have all these camp trailers and trucks going through there and the bikers, and you know what, it's going to take probably something like it took for, uh, for, uh, Highway to Demme. It's going to be a long time, but yeah, if we could start now, maybe in ten, fifteen years, you can, because it is a dangerous road. So, thank you, Commissioner.
To, to listen to our concerns, and, and we can make sure we did our due diligence on that part, and we can, we can relay that to them as well, so.
I just want those kids, you know, they, they need to have a safe path to that school. There's not a lot of options out there, and I just think that it, it's important for them, please, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can you ask Commissioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works now, our Airport, Airport Manager, Ms. Rebecca.
I'm just caught up here. All right. Chairman, Commissioners, welcome. Um, I'll give you a quick overview of the airport. My name is Rebecca Riner. I've been with the airport now for just about eight years. Uh, I've been working in aviation for just about twenty. As the Airport Manager, I focus on the development and maintenance of the airport's infrastructure, while also being responsible for the day-to-day business. Uh, we are an enterprise fund, and so we strive to support ourselves. Uh, I'm also responsible for assuring that we have a safe and secure airport, and that we, that we meet all regulatory requirements. Um, I work closely with the FAA and State Aviation Division to secure funding for our airport development and maintenance, and I assure that all airport staff are trained, meeting and exceeding state and federal regulations. Uh, the airport has six full-time employees, this includes my position, an airfield supervisor, three air, airfield operations technicians, and one administrative position, which is currently vacant. Airport staff are responsible for maintaining airport facilities, grounds, equipment, as well as serving as airport rescue firefighters. They're also line service trained, so that they can assure a fuel quality and provide aircraft fueling. Uh, they also perform daily inspections and have to report on all those. The airport itself is seven-hundred-and-forty acres, uh, it's all fenced, and we have four runways, one is paved through your dirt, and it's all about four miles of, uh, runways. We have sixteen T-hangers that we ran out to local pilots, excuse me, I have a little bit of a cold, and sixteen thousand eight hundred square feet of corporate box hangers. And finally, I work with our commercial air carrier, Advanced Air. Uh, right now, we have approximately nine thousand deployments, and an deployment is, uh, when someone gets on a plane and leaves our airport, that's part of how our funding comes from the FAA, and we currently have twenty-four flights a week. All right, and so for my airport update, um, right now, our big project is, uh, updating our lighting on our runway to LED, as well as installing taxiway lighting, which will also be LED. Right now, we only have reflectors. So that project's underway. also be LED. Right now, we only have reflectors. So that project's underway. Part of that is our funding that we were going to have from the FAA. They've actually identified additional funding that'll allow us to use our bipartisan infrastructure funds that we had set aside for this project to update our parking lot. Yay. That's a big one for us. So that's about 750,000 extra dollars that will be coming to the airport. Currently, this is what our parking lot looks like when we do get ready. So we don't have any lights. We don't have any parking spaces. We flood, and it's just, it's a mess. So having this project, I really feel it's going to get us to a point where our terminal's updated, we've got a good fuel farm, our runway's in good shape, our pavement on the airfield is in good shape. We get this project done, we're going to be in a really good position for the next decade or so. Beyond that, our training, Mike Davila completed his line service certification. This is something we have to do every two years to assure that when we receive our fuel, we know how to test it. We're able to do quality control when we're fueling aircraft. And then finally, airport staff are taking OSHA training classes. So this is something that we've been able to get through the New Mexico County's learning assignments. Those online courses, so we're taking classes like bloodborne pathogens for first responders, lockout-tagout, hazmat for first responders, among others. So that's kind of the 10,000-foot overview. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Do you have questions? Thank you.
All right. Welcome you all to come out and take a tour.
Okay, moving on to facilities, ground maintenance. I don't see Jay, so I guess it's all you luck. Jason.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and our new board. Happy New Year. Glad to see you all here. So my name is Jason Lockett. I'm the Public Works Director here at Grant County. My background is pretty much 23, 24-plus years in facilities, maintenance, HVAC, things like that. And so been here a little, right around eight years. And so happy to be here. My position is responsible for the overall management of 36 employees within the airport, facilities maintenance, the fleet maintenance department, and the road department. Help develop and manage the department budgets, plans, and cost estimates for constructions and major maintenance projects, ensure safe operating procedures and compliance within all of these areas, and make sure that the laws and regulations are followed. As you, Rebecca just gave her her report over the airport, so I do oversee that. Also, the facilities and grounds maintenance, we have 10 employees there. It consists of one maintenance supervisor, five maintenance technicians, an electrician, two custodians, and one shooting safety range officer. And so with that, we have 20 main facilities that we primarily look at. That doesn't count just the number of total buildings that we oversee, but 20 main facilities that we oversee, four parks from Pachita to North Hurley to Baton, out to Hila. Also, moving on with that, the fleet manager, or the fleet maintenance positions, we have one fleet manager position that's open and vacant there. It's a total of four employees there, two mechanics, one of those positions is open, and also we have one fleet service worker there. Our total, we have about 190 vehicles, excluding the volunteer fire department apparatuses that Chief Grove's talked about. So moving on to the road supervisors, our road department, I'm sorry, our road supervisors, we have two of those now. It's 16 total employees, and then we have a carpenter with multiple truck drivers, blade, and equipment operators and laborers that encompass those 16 employees. We maintain 685.6 certified miles of road within the county. We also deal with what Mr. Hogan was talking about, the local government road funds. Those are LGRF funds. You'll hear me talk about that pretty often. And so we're trying to come up with new ways that we do those, those projects within the county. The best way to do that is, I think we're trying to look at all the districts and try to not just pick certain areas, but try to spread the love per se through all the districts. And so we start, we start talking with with all the commissioners and then the constituents that you guys talk to. When you start getting more complaints and things like that, we look at all of those roads, try to start seeing how we can do, do better maintenance in those areas and come up with projects. Also, I work with with Joseph really closely. Since he's been here, things have been going a lot smoother. But to be truthful, all these people in this room, which you've heard reports from, we all work together well as a team, and I think that we're doing really well. And so with your guys' continued support, I think we'll continue to do great things here at Grant County. I will continue on to the actual reports for county maintenance. So under the current projects, we're still working on the entire admin plumbing fixture replace. We're getting all the new china and flush valves, sinks, faucets, all that good stuff happening. Finishing up on the courthouse interior paint project, that's coming along very well. Also, the holding cell repurpose and remodel is starting to kick off as well. As Mr. Anizola reported, the detention center modular building project is fixing to get a lot closer to being done. The admin and building general break room kitchen remodel here in the back, the new commissioners will probably see that it's pretty vacant back here, but we're going to have brand-new cabinets, and it's going to look, it'll look really nicely updated back there. And then we're also doing a Silver Street complex, an entrance canopy over there since our parking lot's been done. Under the future projects, the detention center laundry wash and dry replaced and addition rework, still the electrical renovations and show ring area at the fairgrounds, the admin building railing system installation in the front. So we're also key event dates, the detention center interior paint on the new sliders and centralized hallway, that was completed. That pad was poured. We're going to be finishing that, and then also that asphalt project is pretty much done completely now. There's just, just a little bit of cleanup. Also wanted to note on here that we had 4,150 visitors to the shooting range last year. That's from January till December. Stand for any questions on the Moving on to the fleet, the December completed projects, we had 20 oil changes and inspections, 19 diagnosing repairs, three warranty repairs. We've started numerous units with recall repairs. As the sheriff can probably note on that, we have all kinds of recalls that usually come in on a lot of newer vehicles that we get. One blade had the cutting edges replaced, and the six units had their tires repaired, replaced. We're working on quotes for leasing some equipment or possibly buying some for repair and restoration of our roads in Grant County. And the new preventative maintenance agreements have started with Wagner on our six blades. Stand for any questions, our fleet managers? The road department, routine blading on all kind of roads continues, routine maintenance in all districts, blading, cleaning cattle guards, replacing wings, cleaning debris, clearing of trees on roadways, debris around guardrails and bridge approaches. Had a contractor finish hauling 1,000 tons of material to the road department. Culverts have been ordered for the Joseph Blaine project, and they're going to be shipped on the sixth. And I think that, I think they did get shipped. So we could have 1,000 tons of, for our future projects, we're going to stage at the entrance to the Royal John Mine Road. We're going to be putting about a mile of four-inch overlay up on that road for the road that's gotten pretty bad up there for those residents. Also, we're going to start a new road entrance for the Forgotten Veterans Memorial, along with fencing to keep the vehicles out of the Baton Park area. Key event dates for us, we're sending two employees to hands-on driving portion of their CDL training in Las Cruces. Stand for any questions there?
Commissioner Medina?
Jason, first and foremost, I want to thank you again for that plaque out there. It was amazing. They really appreciate it. Thank you very much. So with bad weather coming, Jason, you know what happens in the roads. My eastern side of my district has a lot of dirt roads. So tying in that Wagner contract and everything, you have the ability to make sure that those graders are moving and we're taking care of it. Because that's one of the phone calls that we get a lot of times, if those graders aren't moving enough and stuff like that. You're able to monitor that, correct?
That is correct. Part of that, Chairman and Commissioner Medina, we, we have a vision link program that's installed on those, and so we get to see, we can do geo fencing, we can do all of that stuff, see what their idle times are. And so that's getting initiated now. So we will definitely be able to tell on those, even more snow-packed areas, things like that, if those blades are moving and making sure that there's, we're being the most efficient that we can.
That's just some information I will be able to pass on to one of my quarter leads as well as if I get phone calls. That way, it gives me the ability to also express to the caller that you do have a way of tracking them. They are moving and so forth. It also gives me the ability to inform them of to how the road department works and stuff.
That's correct. And to be truthful, you might want to mention to them too, that sometimes we might have a blade situated out there that was for a project. It might not be on or moving, but we do have blades that are doing the actual roads. So might just have a certain operator out there getting to all the roads. So they still might see one sitting there, but that doesn't mean that we're, you know, it could just be for a project.
Perception kills.
Right.
So I just, I just want to make sure that I have the proper information that I can pass on to people. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And as far as the plaque, we have a great team here. Joe really helped work on that, and it was, it was a great maintenance team that had installed, and I hope the family enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, B, review the regular meeting agenda. County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, welcome to the new Commissioners. Looking forward to working with you. So in front of you, you have your agenda for the regular meeting on Thursday. First items of business will be, you will always approve your regular meeting agenda. That's very important that we do. Next, you will elect a chairperson and a vice chair for the 2025 calendar year. Moving down to presentations, we have our county assessor, Ms. Trish Hugh, on the agenda to discuss some recent findings, findings, concerns that were in her property tax division inspection. So property tax division comes each year, and they look at the operations of the assessor's office to make sure that we're collecting, or not collecting, that we are administering the property tax code properly. There's several items that they look at. There were a few areas of concern, so the commission has requested that she come and discuss some of the challenges around those issues that were identified. Item B, we are, we're just going to present this to Mr. Roscoe. So we have a employee who's been with the county road department for 30 years. Unfortunately, he's on vacation. We keep missing him. He's had 30 years of service for several months now. So Jason will just present his award to him, but I do want to acknowledge that he has been an employee for 30 years. You also, each month, will hear a report from the hospital CEO, Mr. Robert Whitaker. So he will be here to give you a brief report on GRMC. The elected officials will present their monthly reports. Moving down to RMC, this is the consideration of your consent agenda, and you will see in your agenda pockets, you have minutes from the work session, minutes from the December 19th regular meeting, the expenditure report, and our healthcare claims, which is previously known as indigent healthcare claims. This is something that we have to approve no matter what. So statute says you pay for these, and you will see that in there. And this typically are things that you will always see on your consent agenda. However, if you have any questions, you want me to go into more detail with those, I'm happy to do that. But it's usually pretty straightforward. There'll be some other things from time to time that we add to that consent agenda. It's always will be regular business that you see on either annually or quarterly or something like that. It's not going to be anything that requires any extensive discussion or decision-making. Usually, they're things that you are required to approve. Moving on to new business, item D, we have a two-caster advisory board, so we have some appointments that need to be made to that, but I believe we're going to probably want to table that again. The chairman can elaborate on that if you want.
You know, when we get to that other part, I will.
Okay. Moving on, item E, consideration of 2025 commission meeting dates. So what you will see in your pocket is two options. You have an option to consider, or to consider what we've done in the last few years. We have a work session on a regular meeting, and then we have the second work session that happens two weeks following the first work session. And we have asked you to consider removing that second work session and just sticking with a, what you would see this week, is a work session and a regular meeting. So you have a calendar, you have two options in front of you to consider when you approve your commission meeting dates.
So I do want to, I mean, that it's a work session, discuss this a little bit, and I want to get a feel for our commissioners as to what they're thinking as far as the two points that were, that are being presented to us. I'm pretty open to what you guys decide as far as the work session, the three meetings or the two meetings. My only concern is that what I don't want to do is if we go to the two work sessions, is that I really don't want to put any more stress on, on Amy in case we have to have special meetings where she's trying to drum up a quorum and setting out dates that don't work. You know, because sometimes commissioners don't answer emails, and for me, I'm pretty, pretty open to being, you know, retired to come in when I need to, so I'll leave that up to you guys. I'm open to either one of them. The only other thing is that I really, and I'm going to say it, but, you know, and I've said it before up here, you know, your lack of planning is not my sense of urgency either. You know, we, we've, we've had three meetings, and we usually will change the last meeting of the month to a special meeting because we have to take action on certain things. I also know that our budget's coming up, so we're going to have a little bit, probably three meetings a month here. So I'm, I'm opening it up to what you guys think and which direction you want to go. If you feel we can do it in two meetings a month, I'm good with it. If you want to keep the three, I'm good. It doesn't matter to me, whatever you guys are thinking.
One thought I had, I do agree that if, my understanding is that that third work session, or that third meeting, has often been used as a special meeting. And I would hate to have the staff have to, as you say, Chairman, you know, clamor around trying to find a date that works for everybody, that doesn't seem efficient. I also, I'm conscious as a new commissioner, not to change things that maybe have been working. And then also public perception, you know, we're, we get pretty good benefits, and we're paid pretty well for this job. And three meetings a month, it's not really asking that much. So I'm, feeling like we should keep the three meetings a month for now. It's always easier to get rid of something than add it later if you need it. So, you know, maybe, maybe for now, we keep the three meetings.
Mr. Chairman, can I complicate this a little bit?
Sure.
If we're going, if you want to consider the three meetings, which I'm not opposed to at all, what happens is it's twice as much work when we change it from a work session to a regular meeting. So if you guys want to consider having that third meeting, maybe that is a second regular meeting, and we dispose of the work session prior. So you would have a work session, a regular meeting, and then we would hold a second regular meeting to be able to conduct business. Because what happens initially, the discussion behind that and the reason that was added is the commission at the time wanted to have this work session specifically for presentations. Well, there never really was enough demand to have presentations. And I would say that, myself included, the staff got a little lackadaisical about, oh, well, we can just get the commission to change this to a regular meeting instead of staying on task and getting their agenda items submitted on a regular, in a timely manner to be able to get them on the regular meeting agenda. So if you wanted to do that, and if you're worried about the workload on Amy, it would be easier if that third meeting was actually a regular meeting and not a work session.
You know, hearing that, I mean, I can hear what you're saying. The only thing, the reason I like the work session is because of what we're doing right now exactly. Because to me, on Thursday, and it should have been Because to me on Thursday, and it should have been like this for a long time, we've had all these discussions during a work session. Our next thing is with our, our regular meetings is our discussions are kept down a little bit because by then we should already know and done our research on whatever we need to do. Now, you know, one of my biggest things is as a Commissioner, is you are elected and you're getting paid. Just like Commissioner Stevens said, you know, Commissioners have 27 days or 28 days, depending on the number of months, to do whatever they want, plan whatever they want, go on vacations. You know, it used to be sort of the past practice, which if, if I am elected chair again, is it was getting hard to try to, well, I'm not going to be there because, you know, and I'd like to vote on this. Well, you know, I'm getting to the point of, of, you know what, if you're really, if you're really, you're getting paid, you're getting benefits, you're here three days out of the month. If it really means that much to you to vote, come in and vote. You know, after Thursday, we have our meeting date set. You know, my suggestion is to do maybe because all my jobs, being in law enforcement, being in HR, being on call, this gets the goals on my refrigerator. And I tell my family, look, these are the dates that I'm busy, that I can't do anything. You know, you have 20 some other days to decide what you want to do, go on vacation. And, but I need to be at these commissioner meetings. And that's what I did when I was on call in these other professions. So I think that we owe it to the people that elected us to serve in office. We also owe it to our constituents that we are here, we are voting. And that's why I'd say I leave it open. But at the end of the day, where I don't want to get caught up in is we need to have a special meeting because this grant's coming up. We need to take action because of this. We need to take action because of that. I understand that. You know, if we can get somebody to plan, which is going to take a little bit more work too, is looking at everything that's going to hit us in February and say, yeah, it's there. We don't have special meetings. I'm good with it. So I'm here with whatever you guys want to do. You know, I don't have a problem with two meetings, but I can probably tell you in June, you know, three months before, before July, we probably are going to have special meetings because of the budget. Rightfully so, and I can live with those.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, sorry, I can complicate it even more. So when I first started here, we had, we had four meetings a month. We had two work sessions and two regular meetings. If the second meeting rolled around and we didn't have any business, we canceled it. So maybe just listening to what you've had, what you've said, maybe that's what we go back to. And if we look at, then it's an easier way for Amy to plan. She knows exactly what she's looking at. It's no surprises. It's no scrambling around trying to change a special meeting to, or I mean, change a work session to a special meeting. It gives you the opportunity to have your work session, that you can still discuss those items that would be on that regular meeting agenda. Having done it all these ways, it's, we can do whatever the pleasure of the commission is. It's, I will tell you, scrambling around and doing special meetings is not something that we want to do. That makes our life extremely difficult. I would much rather have meetings on the calendar and cancel them than to try to add them. So we would not be opposed to going to four meetings a month.
Commissioner Fronas?
Mr. Chair, fellow Commissioners, I, I do, thinking about this issue, I, I do agree with my Commissioners, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Ponce. That public perception is, is a big deal because we do get paid to be here. I, I do see Charlene's point is that third meeting be a meeting instead of a work session. That way we can take care of business at meeting. But I also see your point, Mr. Chair, that it could be a work session. But I, I, I guess my comment is that I definitely want to keep it to three meetings. Like Commissioner Stevens said, we're new up here, myself, Commissioner Shelley, Commissioner Stevens. You don't, I don't, I don't want to change anything that's not broken after hearing all the comments. I definitely want to keep it to three meetings as the old commission had it. But I see Charlene's point in being able to act on business on that third meeting. So I'm sorry to be confusing up here and complicate things, but I, I do want to keep it at three meetings. And either, either way, it works for me, either a work session or an actual meeting so that we can vote on issues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Can you say again, or maybe, or maybe the county manager can, why did we start with the third work session?
Well, the third work session, I think if I remember correctly, a lot of it is today, you heard the presentations from our directors and you have presentations from our elected officials. You know, our meetings were getting into the point of four, five, six hours because one of my ideas on it was that, you know, we spread out the reports to, to bring down the time of our meetings. The other part is, I don't remember exactly what Commissioner Brown's things were as far as the third meetings.
It was intended for presentations from outside entities, from the public. That was the intent behind the third work session, or the third meeting session.
Right. And then the other part was that like sort of what we had at the work session on presentations for the property tax and the recognition of the employees. And you have like HMS and all that coming in or you try to work with that. So that, that was the intent of having the third work session. Is mostly presentations, things that we weren't going to take action under. And, and looking at the calendar for 25, I think we have nine special meetings scheduled for the year because November, December, we don't because of the holidays. And so it's up to you guys. I mean.
And those special meetings are in addition to this other work session?
They could be, what we were doing, what we could is the, the last, I'll give you an example right here, like February, we have a work session February 20th. According to this, we have a work session February 11th, regular meeting February 13th, and then we have a work session February 25th. A lot of the time, we're changing these work sessions to special meetings, the last one on the 25th to fit and get the business done.
That's my rationale for changing that from a work session to a regular meeting. And if you have business that needs to be conducted, we can do that. We're not paying twice the amount of advertising. We're not redistributing agendas twice, changing a work session to a regular meeting. If you want to go with those, the three meetings, which I agree with everything that you've said, it makes a lot more sense from a staff perspective and we can back to agendas to where you're not in here four or five hours to be able to conduct the business that you need to conduct. If we have that second meeting scheduled as a regular meeting, then we're, it would be a lot easier when it comes to budget season. And we're scheduling budget hearings and budget workshop, budget workshops and all of the additional work that goes into you approving that budget. If that meeting is already scheduled, then we can work with that, knowing that we don't have to, we don't have to reach out to you again and ask for another meeting. That makes, that makes the staff's life a whole lot easier, knowing that we have these dates every single month and we can prepare a little more efficiently rather than scrambling.
You look here, June 24th, we have a work session. Always remember that on June 30th, our preliminary budgets due, right?
In May.
Huh?
It's due in May.
In May? Is it May? Okay. So in May 20th, we have a work session. We can do that at a regular meeting and discuss that. That, that's my whole thing, but it's up to you guys. I mean, I could go two meetings a month. It doesn't matter. Whatever you get.
Well, I guess my opinion is that we're I'm, I'm really sensitive to the burden we're placing on the county staff and to, to be here and do everything that supports this meeting. I mean, they're doing all the work. And it sounds like the best thing that would work for them is to make it a regular meeting and then use the time to take care of business.
That's, that's fine. That's good for me. Whatever you guys think.
Just a clarification, Charlie, is there any advantage to having, like you said, go back to the four where there's two work sessions and two regular meetings? Is there any benefit of that over the one work session and two regular meeting?
The only benefit for that would be, so the purpose of your work session is just to discuss the items that are on your agenda. I would think we could, I mean, I can't predict the future. I know exactly what items are going to fall in. But you know, if we knew that we had the second regular meeting, if it's grant agreements and those sort of things, then maybe that doesn't require a work session just to discuss those. A lot of counties, I've, I've worked in two other counties where I didn't have work sessions. We discussed the item as they came along. I provided you information ahead of time so you knew what you were looking at. So there's a lot of different options. But you know, if you're, if you're going to consider that third meeting, if, if you want to look at the workload and what goes on with all of the things, as Commissioner Shelley just said, that goes to, to making sure that you guys are prepared and that you look good, setting up there. It's, it's a lot easier to know that this is how it's going to be. And I, I honestly think it would be more efficient if you're going to keep the third meeting, that you change that to a regular meeting. That would make our life much easier.
So nine times last year, a special meeting was needed. And so that's the rationale is that if we're adding this, or if we're having this third meeting, it be a meeting, not a work session. So that's where I land then. The three meetings, two regular, one work.
Good with that. Whatever you guys think.
So what I'll do is I will redraft the calendar and give you a third option. And also I will redraft another version of the Open Meetings Act, which is based, the language is based upon your meetings. So not, not a big change.
You know, the other part to this, and yeah, I know I'm going to make you complicated. It shouldn't, doesn't need to be on here, is what I'd really like for our county manager in finance to hold some type of little work session for the budget. Can we do that with one of these March, April, whatever, like we usually do?
Yes, and, and that's something that we're required to do. And so we will do that and we will take as much time as we need to make sure that you fully understand what it is that you're adopting. And so I would be prepared on, on those dates when we have the department heads and elected officials present their requests to you. It's a lengthy meeting. And when we go through what the finance department's recommendations is to you, it will be a lengthy meeting. So, but yes, that would be the idea is having two regular meetings, a work session, that we can incorporate all of the things we need to do within those three days a month.
You all good?
Yes, sir.
Karen?
Moving on to item F, consideration of the 2025 volunteer fire and rescue annual election of officers. So it comes before you each year in January to where you approve the slate of officers of each one of our fire departments. So Roger, do you want to update them on what the changes were?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. So the change is essentially at Pinos Altos Fire Department, we have a new chief, Mr. John Sari, and Assistant Chief Brent Steinberg. And at Tyrone, we have a new department chief, Tony Madron, and Assistant Chief Ian Ryan. Those are the big changes. There were some other lieutenants and captains, maybe along the line there that changed out. But that's what we typically bring before you are the chiefs and assistant chiefs.
You know what I forgot to ask you earlier, and I got hit with this last week sometime. I completely forgot. Some people that want to volunteer for these fire departments, do they have to live? Like in that certain district or can, like can somebody in Baird volunteer for Tyrone Fire Department?
Well, it's preferred that they live in the district. I believe the language is that when they're reviewing new members, that they live or work in the district. But by the majority vote of the members present, they could be voted in. It, it isn't practical, say, for somebody in Baird to be a member at Tyrone because they're going to drive through three other fire districts to get over to Tyrone. So we try to direct them to the departments that are closest to where they are.
Thank you. I wait and answer this.
Any other questions on election of, approving the election of officers? Thanks, Roger. Next, item G, consideration of 2025 holidays. Each year, the commission approves the employee holidays. This has, it remains exactly the same. This also aligns with the holidays that are outlined in the bargaining unit contract. So there, as you can see, I don't know how many, there are 13, I think. So nothing's changed there. Questions? Changes?
I just, I mean, coming back, some of these holidays, like Christmas for 2025, coming back from one day, you know, I like to really, I mean, it'd be, and I don't know how the employees feel. This is me thinking out loud. But I mean, I'd rather have Christmas Day and Thursday and Friday off than Wednesday and Thursday than coming back Friday. But that's not up to me. That's a, well, I guess it's sort of up to us if we're voting on it. But that'd be more the employees because I see some of these holidays and, I mean, in reality, I mean, I wasn't employed bef, you know, before I retired. How productive am I going to be coming in Friday after a two-day holiday? I mean, but I'll just shut up and move on. Mr. Chair? Commissioner Fronas?
Mr. Chair, Charlie. I agree with Chris, the chair. How, are we able to add that Friday as a holiday for the county employees? Because I do agree.
Yes, you, you can do that. I would then have to go to the union to add that in as a, add that in. But I don't think they're going to complain about getting an extra day. I don't think that's going to be a problem.
No, I do agree because it, then they're off for two days with the weekend. It just makes sense to give Friday along with Thursday. Thank you.
What, how do you feel about something like that? I don't want to, I mean, I guess my first question was, could we approve this the way it is? And then you think about it, look at it, go out to them and then change it?
I, I don't think that you're going to find one county employee that's going to oppose you adding a third day at Christmas. Like you're not, because what happens a lot of time is people take vacation that day because they don't want to come back. We have a skeleton crew anyway, because people take off during the holidays. So I don't think there's, I don't need any time to think about that. I could tell you today that it would be perfectly fine if you added that third day to be able to not have them come back. So it's, our axes are pretty bare around Christmas. And I wouldn't expect to see too many people here on that Friday.
You could do the same one in yours?
I'm going to do what?
Same one in yours. So Monday, Thursday, I do one, that's how many?
We're going to do one, do them both?
Yeah.
I didn't even notice New Year's. Hold on, let me look.
She says the halls are empty at Christmas. I can imagine. I'm going to go to the worst.
That one's a little stretchy because yours is on Wednesday.
That was this year for 25, but for, for next year, it'll be Thursday.
Thursday. New Year's Eve is on the calendar, is December 31st.
Just to be thorough, are there any like budget ramifications or anything in the county that would need attention on that Friday?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good.
We'll extract you another version for consideration or there's. We'll redraft you another version for consideration, or there's been adding the additional day at Christmas.
Mr. David? Thank you.
And afternoon.
And afternoon, yes.
So it's only, you're only bringing this up though, Chairman, because the way they found this year, I mean, it sorta might become an entitlement for additional days off in the future, or, or additional holidays in the future, by setting a precedent.
Well, I'm sorta like looking at you and telling you, I'm almost outta here, and you can deal with that. You know, but I, I mean, to me, it, it just, I mean, the productivity too. You know, and, I mean, people like to spend time with their family, and you know, you go out of town and putting vacation, I'm, I'm open to what you guys want, but I like to see those, them enjoy their holidays a little bit more. I mean, if we saw what we saw up here, in our directors and how their departments are, they're doing an excellent job. And that's part of my, my thing with them is, is how do we do it right to have them enjoy some time off with all the work that they do prior?
Mr. Chair. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I, I think the employees would, would have to realize that every calendar year's gonna be different, because if, obviously, if the Fourth of July falls on a Tuesday, we're not gonna give them Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Right.
I think they, they realize, because as a current employee, I, I do realize that our days off, I check the calendar every year and say, what days off are we getting this year? Because sometimes if the Fourth lands on Thursday, we'll get Thursday, Friday, and then we time accordingly based on that holiday schedule. But I know if next year lands on Friday, we're not getting Thursday off. So I, I do think the employees realize that this calendar is subject to change, and 2025 worked out well for them. And I, I do agree with Commissioner Medina that, you know, we gotta do the same for New Year's Eve. And they work hard, and they do need that time off just to rebuild, re-energize, and come back with a fresh feeling. Thank you.
And the day after New Year's is actually our problem for next year, because this is just 2025, so we're only adding the one day, because we'll be here next year to do 26.
Mr. Chair. Can you just put fine print on the bottom that Commissioner Flores said? It is gonna be subject to change, because in a couple years, we're gonna be arguing. Can we have Saturday through Thursday off? Thank you.
Anything else on that?
Generous, man. Generous. Good. They deserve it.
Chair.
To item H, consideration of the purchase of a 2024 four-by-four water tender with grant funds for $550,000 for the Pino Salto's Volunteer Fire Department. So Pino Salto's Volunteer Fire Department was also the recipient of fire grant, or fire council grant funding for the purchase of this truck. Due to the amount is on the agenda for your approval, the grant award will cover the entire purchase of the vehicle. So there won't be any additional funds requested. Questions?
Nope.
Next, item I, consideration of the purchase of one Alexis Wildland Interface Engine Apparatus for $714,140 for Upper Members Volunteer Fire Department. Same grant funding, and so this would allow the Upper Members Volunteer Fire Department to purchase this with their grant funds. And lastly, item J, consideration of the purchase of one 1153 Freightliner, it's a pumper, for $764,384 for Fort Bear Fire Department. The department receives $600,000 of grant funding. We will utilize an insurance settlement for a rolled engine in the amount of $155,423.67. And then the fire chief has requested $10,960.33 from county funds to purchase the truck. I don't have any issue allocating the $10,000. Any questions?
So I have a question, Mr. Chairman, and Charlene, we, is this pumper replacing the one that was rolled?
That's all. Thanks.
Commissioner Medina?
So I know already I said it doesn't matter what fire truck it's or versus the color, but since this department's starting to grow, are we looking at the same color scheme, chief? Are we starting to build a force where we're gonna build color schemes for one department? Where, as we get these new trucks coming in, are we gonna stay one color, one design across the board, since this is Grant County Fire? Are we looking at doing something like that?
That, that's, that's the desire. Roger and I have talked about that, that we have to get these fire departments in the mindset of, yes, they are Grant County Fire, and we need to look at apparatuses being the same, their SCBA's being the same, their wildland gear being the same, their, so then not only is everyone outfitted the same, then at least when it comes time for purchasing, like, you know, we get a lot better deals, we're buying more, you know, hoses and all of the parts interact and interface with each other. That's the idea moving forward. Now, getting the buy-in of the VFDs is a different story, so we may need your support with that.
I just think, I just think that when we first, when I first became a commissioner, we discussed this, that this, the goal was to build this department, and I want uniform in it, you know? Chief, you're, you're the head of this department, I would like uniform. Commissioner Flores, State Police doesn't have one red State Police car and one white State Police car, it's uniform.
Absolutely.
So you are the chief of this department, and, and I'd like to see that direction come down where it is uniform. I don't care the design of the pumper, I don't care the brand of the pumper, but I think a color scheme and uniformity needs to start coming into place, and we're spending money on these trucks and getting grants and funded and so forth.
Yes, sir. Due to purchases, this will, this will take quite some time, 'cause some departments say last year got SCBA. So for standardization, to get everybody using the same SCBA, for instance, it's gonna take a few years to get us there. But yes, that is the plan, as the manager has mentioned, we've discussed that, and I've had some of these discussions with our chiefs, and we are wanting to standardize, yes.
Chairman, and I, I'm, I think I'm hearing the right things. We, to me, I'm an engineer, so it's, to me, it's more important to standardize the functionality of the equipment. So the model and everything sort of does matter, not just the color. But you're working on that, right?
Well...
So then, when we, I mean, you hook up to, you have the right connections if you have to help out another team or whatever.
Yes. That is the hope. Now, every manufacturer has something a little different as far as features and things, or how their configuration is set up on their engines, so, but yes, to get people trained to a level where, you know, if I'm at Tyrone and a Fort Bear truck pulls up, and they need somebody to run it, I could step over there and run it. And that is the idea, yes. We would like to do that. But as you point out, being an engineer and whatnot, that each vendor has something a little bit different. And some of the departments are pursuing other features on trucks that, you know, another department right now might not be considering or looking at, so.
But Commissioner Medina, we did hear you loud and clear, and, and we are learning on, on moving in that direction.
Thank you.
One other question, Chairman, is who performs maintenance on these? I know in my prior work, we tried to standardize so that our maintenance became more uniform and, or something that we could deal with internally, and how do, how do we have?
Most of, most of our testing and maintenance is being done by companies that are traveling here from Los Cruces or in that general area, possibly Albuquerque. We, we don't have certified mechanics that are maintenanceing our vehicles. We don't, their, their annual periodic maintenance has to be done annually, and, you know, consisting of oil changes and things like that. So we bring in contract vendors to come in and conduct that. We try to have it set up so we're getting the best bang for our buck, so that we can maybe get, you know, all of our fire departments doing them on the same week. And the vendor will send their teams here, their crew, and they'll spend the night. That is a savings to us where we're not having to pay travel. They charge us a pretty penny to drive up here, you know, from Los Cruces, where they may be only gonna be here for two hours, and, you know, it's costing the department several hundred dollars. But it's all contracted out with vendors that we use.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Next, we'll move on to resolutions. Item K, consideration of resolution R2501, this is the Open Meetings Act. So in your packet, you have two versions of the Open Meetings Act, which correlates with your meeting dates. As I mentioned earlier, I will draft a third version, which will reflect the discussion from earlier. This is a requirement each year for you to adopt the Open Meetings Act, and this outlines how you conduct your meetings, how they are properly noticed, and it's important that we comply with this, 'cause then when we don't, then we're subject to enforcement from the state. So it's critically important that we pay attention to this, this is an important document. Any questions on that? Item L, consideration of resolution R2502, Grant County Regional Dispatch Authority member appointments. So the joint powers agreement for regional dispatch has one voting member and one alternate for Grant County. I am currently the voting member, and Commissioner Brown was the alternate. So you will need to make those appointments. And what we've done with all of these resolutions is, it's just easier to track them via resolution, so we utilize a resolution for you to make those appointments. That's why it's done in that form.
Are you still good with being on that?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody out here interested in being an alternate member?
I currently sit on it.
This is Commissioner Flores.
Yeah, you're, you're down there. Okay, so Commissioner Medina is interested in that? Okay.
Next, item M, consideration of resolution R2503, Grant County Water Commission member appointments. So currently, it is Commissioner Medina, and Commissioner Brown was on there some week to make those appointments.
I'm happy to be an alternate on that if, if we need to appoint one.
Anything else on that?
Okay, we'll move on to item N, consideration of resolution R2504, Southwest Solid Waste Authority member appointments. This is a joint powers agreement, the county has two seats on that board, and we always appoint the two voting members and two alternates. And this meeting is one time a month. And currently, Andrea and I are serving in all four of those capacities, but we, so we will need two voting members, two alternates.
Hmm? I can do this one. You'll be out one foot.
I'll do it too.
Next, item O, consideration of resolution R2505, New Mexico County Insurance Authority Pool Board member appointments. So the county has a voting member and an alternate to the Insurance Authority Pool Board. I currently serve in that capacity, and Commissioner Edwards was the alternate.
You're on the board there, right?
Yes.
And you can stay there, right?
It would make sense if you left me there, yes. I have to attend the meetings as a board member anyway, so.
So we just need an alternate? I'll be that.
Okay, moving on to item P, consideration of resolution R2506, Southwestern Commission Alliance member appointments. So we have, this is also a joint powers agreement, and this consists of county commissioners in the southwest corner of the state. And Commissioner Billings was our member, and Commissioner Medina was the alternate.
I think this would be perfect spot. You guys could tell me different, for Mr. Shelley. That's my idea.
Yes, sir.
I'd be interested in doing that.
Do you wanna remain as alternate?
Sure.
All right, moving on to item Q, consideration of resolution R2507. So statute requires that counties must consider a low-income property tax rebate every odd numbered year. So every odd numbered year in January, we put this in front of you to consider the adoption of an ordinance that enacts a low-income property tax rebate. And what this does is it provides a rebate for low-income property tax owners. When I tell you the reasons why I think this is a terrible idea, I don't wanna come across as being a cold-hearted human being that has no compassion for our low-income population, 'cause I know we have a lot of those. But from my perspective, from a finance perspective, and as your county manager, this is a very dangerous ordinance to consider, because you have no idea how many individuals will take advantage of that rebate. So it is open-ended, we would never be able to quantify what the financial impact is to our property tax revenue. Some example, a few years ago, I'm only aware of two other counties that have this enacted, and that's Santa Fe County and Los Alamos County. Both of those are obviously not, don't have near as high a poverty rate as we do. So I use the example of Santa Fe County. The first year, they saw about a $330,000 hit to their property tax revenue. Then, let's see, it increased approximately $100,000 every year for the next three to four years. So the last time I had the conversation with the county manager, it was about a $600,000 hit to their property tax revenue. In a county that size, that's not detrimental. A county our size, taking a $600,000 hit, which I believe, if you took the number of individuals we have in poverty, that's gonna be even larger. And the other thing I want you to consider whenever you think about whether or not you want to pursue this, is in the general election in November, there were two constitutional amendments that provided for veterans exemptions. And so what that did is, that's also going to erode our property tax revenue. We've been trying to identify what that financial impact is, and it's gonna be anywhere, probably. If we've done our calculations correctly, could be half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars. So then you tack on low income on top of that, then you're eroding our number-one source of revenue. So property tax is our primary source of revenue. So it's, it's a little scary to look at something that you can't even begin to quantify. So that's why, as your county manager, I will always discourage the low-income property tax rebate. I think there's other things we can do for that population other than... I think there's other things we can do for that population other than playing Russian roulette with our number one source of revenue.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. On, on the, this isn't necessarily benefiting low income people, it's benefiting the property owners of low income properties. And how is that defined?
So it's, it's low income property tax owners. So they have to qualify, they have to be, they have to be considered the low income property tax owner. So it can't be someone who is not identified as low income. You have to be, so it has to be, you know, an example might be an elderly individual in a community that is on a fixed income that would be considered low income that owns their residence. So it wouldn't be someone who does not fall in that category that owns the residence and rents to low income, which is I think is where you're.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Is actually the property tax owner.
Can't be Elon Musk renting a house and renting it to Chris.
Okay. And so it's not like the big low income property that we, that's on the hill crest? That's not for them to apply for a tax rebate?
No, you, no. You actually have to be the owner of the property and fall into that low income category.
Okay. So it does benefit directly in low income people?
But then when you, so here's the, here's the other edge of the sword is yes, it benefits them, but then what does it do to your ability to provide services to every resident of the county? So when we start, when we start seeing our revenues decline in those larger increments, then what do we look at? We look at cutting staff, we look at cutting services. We, you know, we talked a little bit about roads. We, we struggle to maintain our roads the way we're supposed to. So if we're eroding that revenue source, then you are jeopardizing being able to provide services to every resident of the county.
Okay. And then my other question, Mr. Chairman, was why, why aren't we mandated to look at this every odd year?
You will learn in your course as a commissioner over the next four years, there are a lot of really odd statutes that says we have to do certain things. And so it, it says in statute that the county commission shall consider this every odd numbered year.
So that's it, New Mexico State statute?
Yes, that we are, that we're governed to follow.
Yeah, you're going to learn as commissioners, like this is sort of gut wrenching where you want to help the public, where you want to help low poverty, but at the end of the day, what do you, what else do you jeopardize with this? You know, it's sort of like Sardine said, you know, I don't see the, our bill being six hundred thousand, but I could assume that it'd probably be three hundred and some thousand dollars. So where do we come back up here and make those cuts on county stuff, county projects? I mean, I would love, but, to do this, but at the end of the day, we're basically giving the state of New Mexico a blank check, saying fill it out and let us know at the end of the day what we need to send you or, you know, what we're losing. So it's, it, it's a little gut wrenching, but it's, it's hard, it's hard.
And based on the recent election and the voters already voted to decrease property tax revenues for certain veterans, what did you say the amount of that's likely to be?
It's looking to be anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in 2026. And that's been a really difficult one to quantify as well. So that's a rough guess. I'm hoping it's not that high. I'm really hoping it's not that high, but that has been working with the assessor and that's based on, we have a large veterans population in Grant County and so it's, it's a big, it's going to be a substantial hit for us.
Commissioner Medina?
So, Miss Manager, got a quick question, just kind of off the top of my head. So you say it's our primary source of income to the county is property taxes. So do we have the ability, are we doing something with that money when it comes in or just just sitting in a bank? Do we have an opportunity to make money off the revenue that we take in? Because this could be a significant impact with the veteran stuff, with, with the low income stuff we pass. Do we have a backup plan where raising taxes is not the option? But is there some source on the backside where we could generate revenue off the money that's there already?
So we budget all of your property tax revenue as our operational revenue, so that is all budgeted. So thankfully, with some of the changes in the tax code for grocery receipts tax, our grocery receipts tax is higher than it's ever been and it's, it's not doing the cyclical thing like it's done in the past. It is pretty steady and it is much closer to the, the amount of property tax that we generate. So that has been extremely beneficial for us to be able to do the things that we've been doing. It is going to require us, if, if we see this sort of hint with the veterans exemption like we're expecting, then we're going to have to be a little more creative in our budget about how we're spending things because then we're not putting as much into our reserves. We're not putting as much in and those reserves are being invested by the treasurer's office. But your property tax, we budget all of it. It's your operational revenue as well as grocery receipts tax. And when we, if we budget too conservatively with that revenue, then we show that overage, but it goes into your, into your reserves. It's always been my goal to make sure that you have a much higher amount of reserves than is required. I, I think that's good business because if we end up to a situation where we need that money, we have a disaster, we have, I mean, there's numerous things that could happen if we don't have, if we don't have revenue that's readily available. So it, it will, it will make us take a look at the 2026 fiscal year in a little different.
I see that you put your work cut out for you and I just want to make sure that we're going to be ahead of the game and not get to the last resort of, we're going to cut hours by four hours or eight hours on F Y S. I just want to make sure that we're.
I, I don't think that we're in that situation. I, I, I'm comfortable with what we're seeing with the G R T revenue, that that's not something that we're going to have to consider. Now if, you know, we're way off on the veterans exemption and it's, you know, a million five, then yeah, we're going to have to look at something a little more drastic because that's.
And you'll ring the bell already, right? And we've got to, thank you, ma'am, appreciate that.
Just one other question, sorry. If voters also approved a property tax increase in this election and so, or a recent election, a special election, I think. So, but that money doesn't affect our county operating revenue at all, does it?
Are you talking about the one for the schools?
Yeah.
No. So we collect that and disperse that to the schools.
Okay.
Doesn't, doesn't affect us. And we are maxed out on our bills of property tax. So if, you know, we don't, I've learned that, I don't say the word tax increase unless it's dire straits. But for you, in order for you to increase your property tax, you would have to go to the voters. We, we're maxed out on our mills that are allowed without voter referendum.
I just want to kind of summarize that it sounds like while we would like to do something for low income property owners, it wouldn't be responsible fiscally in light of the veterans' benefit. Like the timing is not right because we, we need to make one change at a time. But I am intrigued by, you said there's other things we could do to help low property, low income property owners. So I just think it would be good for us to consider ideas and going forward, things that we could do and that might also be a nice way to ease the pain when, you know, when we're talking to constituents about how we're not going for a low income property tax exemption, but we're looking at other ideas.
Right, so there are other things that the county could do as far as, and we're not, and you'll learn a little more about our financial rebuild, but we're not in a position to do that right now. But there are grant funds out there for home weatherization, things of that nature that you can do to help them improve their homes, which in turn, you know, reduces their utility bills and it gives them a little bit more flexibility with their disposable income. So there are other things that we could consider as a county. It's just not being able to quantify what that looks like is, is a little difficult. Anything else?
No, I think we're good to go.
Next, item R, consideration of resolution R twenty five zero eight, D W I fiscal year 2026 grant application. In your packets, you have the, all of the documents that are required and this is for funding for the D W I program for fiscal year 26. Anything you want to add to that?
Unless they have any questions?
This is where his, the majority of his funding comes from.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the requirement for our grant application for the fiscal year 2026 allows us to operate underneath the county of grant.
We do this every year.
Yes.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Good question. Good question.
Go ahead.
Does this funding assist with projects that you have ongoing like presentations and so forth?
It's a direct funding source for our program. So this is the portion that covers distribution and grant for the fiscal year. So partial is done by grant or through alcohol sales. And then a portion we also, in the grant section of the application, that's where we apply for additional funding to cover a lot of those activities. Core cantinas, prevention activities is a majority of the grant application.
Mr. Gray, the reason I'm asking is years ago, we used to do a program called Every Seven Seconds. Where they take crashed cars to the high schools right before prom graduations. They'd make them write their obituary, the student would disappear for a day. It was impactful. Can we look at something like that for the schools?
Ironically, it's strange that you asked about that. I'm planning on attending an additional county, I think it's McHenry County, that's going to be putting it on in the beginning part of May. And I want to go and observe how they operate that and then hopefully by next year, we can implement that in, in the community here. I know there's been issues in the past and there's been some resistance, but I think some of the schools will be on board with this. So it's definitely something worth looking at.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Next, item S, consideration of resolution R twenty five zero nine, and this resolution is adopting a Grant County GPS and equipment usage policy. Michelle, do you want to provide an update or an overview of that?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. This policy aims to ensure the safety, security, and the proper use of county GPS systems, issue equipment such as cell phones, parcel maps, cameras, handling of emergency communication equipment as well. It's for the safety and security of the county and also its employees and elected officials. I stand for any questions.
So the reason this is in front of you is we have, you know, some departments that utilize equipment, some that don't. And so what we're trying to do is just standardize and have one policy that applies to all departments. So we don't have the assessor's office having a policy, the sheriff's office having a policy, it's one standard policy for every department. And this has been reviewed by legal as well. Questions, Commissioners?
Thank you all that.
Thank you.
I don't know if I want any more hate mail today. So, I mean, I, I like the policies and I like what we put into these policies, but our elected officials are elected officials. I like to see policies that we sit up here and do that, you know, they're enforced and I don't know how to do that, but I'll leave it at that, just don't answer it and something we need to think about because, you know, we, we put policies here, these policies will liability, sometimes are more of a liability if they're not being enforced across the board and, and that's a little concerning to me. I mean, I understand county employees and their directors and you have more control over that. I don't know if we have that control over, say, for example, the sheriff's office, that they have an elected official running their show. So, but at the end of the day, we'll, we'll discuss that further, not here.
Any other questions or comments? No? Next, item T, consideration of resolution R twenty five ten, Tucasa Board Commissioner Appointments. The charter for the Tucasa Advisory Board calls for a county commissioner to be appointed to that advisory board.
So I just want to talk, talk a little bit about this one, Commissioners. I mean, I'm interested in, in, in being on this board. I guess our charter is up to the commissioner, you correct me while I go down this road. You know, I'm not convinced and maybe I'm wrong, that's why I'm asking our county manager to help me out here maybe, is I don't really see a reason on having a Tucasa Advisory Board. My understanding of this is we lease Tucasa to H M S and they run it. An advisory board to me is not like the Board of Trustees where they can go and talk to the CEO, ask him to do certain things. We're here possibly wasting people's time having an advisory board put together or at the end of the day, I don't think, and this is where I may be wrong, I don't think H M S really needs to listen to us as to how or what happens with an advisory board. Reason I'm saying I like to be on this board is because at the end of the day, I think we don't need this board and I think we need to get away from that board and look at other options. Now, just to let you know, other options, I have asked our county manager to put an executive session on for February so we can discuss a little bit more Tucasa and the direction of, of that to see what, what you all think on that. But for the meantime, and the reason I'm saying is that I like to be on this board because at the end of the day, with whatever you guys think, I don't really think we need an advisory board for, for Tucasa. Because it's, am I, I mean, am I right in that as far as H M S is leasing it, H M S doesn't really have to listen to the advisory board?
You are correct. H M S leases the building from the county. I will send the advisory board charter to all of you so that you can read it. It is authorized by the commission, they serve at the pleasure of you. The specific responsibilities, they advocate for Tucasa to increase its visibility and value, identify and keep local regional estate partners informed and engaged, identify and advocate for appropriate resources, working with community providers, agencies to identify emerging, emerging issues and new initiatives to enhance and improve programming, and receive regular statistical reports on the performance from the parties, which would be H M S. So that's the purpose of the advisory board. But it's, it's very clear in that that they serve at the pleasure of the county commission and also that the county commission has the sole authority to revise and amend this charter, which includes disbanding it as well if that's what you choose to do. I will send that out to all of you so you can read it.
Anything else on that?
I don't, I don't know enough to say whether or not it, you know, it needs to continue, but I do know it's a topic that comes up all the time with constituents. They're always like, what's going on with Tucasa? What's going on, you know, with mental health treatment, with drug treatment, like? And so if the board does help with accountability and just information sharing, you know, that would be one thing to consider, but it sounds like we're going to talk about it more next month.
Well, I think for us to get the, 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 the information that the commissioner needs, because I don't remember really anybody on the advisory board really giving us any really giving us any information or, or updates on, on some of this. But I know that HMS does. And I think, you know, if we need that information, I think HMS can, don't they?
Look, they've been coming quarterly and reporting to you. It's usually Suzie or Ron or Suzie and Ron. Um, they're usually with HMS, they schedule them at the same time.
Could we change it to have HMS do it? Since they're running it? I don't know, something to think about.
So you, you, you receive your, so Dr. Adam and Dr. Arizaga should have been here today to give you that report from HMS's perspective. But we've also had the advisory board give you a report periodically.
That's right, yeah, I forgot Suzie and Ron. But anyway, that's, that's something that, whatever you guys think about.
I gotta agree with the commissioner that there is a problem in Grant County. There's a significant problem. And, and we, we need a service line that can help these people. And, Mr. Chair, I agree that we need a more detailed report on how Tucasa is impacting our community, um, the people we serve. We need a service line that's going to help. I'll leave it there till we get back to this issue.
Yeah, I think there needs to be more discussion. That's why I've asked our county manager to put something on the agenda for, for next meeting because, uh, there's a lot of things happening and, and are, are we headed in the right direction with this? You know, that's what's been my, my concern and, and with rumblings out there. Do, do we need to take a step back and all of us, us five and, and our county manager, look at this again and see what, what we can do better for, for our public? So, I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments, questions? Last item under resolutions is consideration of resolution R twenty five eleven, Grant County Federal Grant Management Policy. Andrea?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Excuse me, I have a little cold. Um, before and today is the resolution to adopt the federal, um, grant management policy in light of our recent audit of FY twenty three. Um, the lack of policy had to do with many of our findings. We have worked very hard to implement this, well, to write it, create it, get it, um, to this point. So, um, we're excited to bring this to you. And I stand for any questions?
So as Andrea mentioned, um, a large portion of our audit findings were around federal funding. And so this policy primarily focuses on internal controls, um, and policy to make sure that we are administering those funds like they should be. Um, it has taken months of work. And we have had, um, experts in the federal grant world, um, take a look at this. They've provided comments which, and, um, updates which we, I say we, Andrea's done all of the work, has, um, incorporated into this policy. And it's something that we have to have, and we're very confident that this is a policy that will provide the direction to staff and will accomplish the things and resolve any future audit findings in this area. We, we have to have one, and, um, we would ask for your approval of this draft.
Mr. Medina?
That's why I thank you guys for what you guys did with this. It, it's a huge issue, but you and Andrea and Carolyn and all you guys do from the financial side of the county. Um, it's alarming when, when you see a line item number change without a whisper and not being told nothing, and it's alarming. Ms. Manager, me and you spoke about this. Um, it, it, it's important, it's needed, and I appreciate all the efforts you guys have put in for. Thank you so much.
Well, we are on another ugly audit like that, so we're working hard.
I don't want to scare you.
Any other questions or comments? Next, we'll move on to bids and RFPs. Item B is consideration of award, RFP twenty five zero five, resurfacing of detention center showers to Marathon Engineering Corporation.
On October third, twenty twenty four, Grant County released a request for proposals for resurfacing of the detention center showers in accordance with NMSA nineteen seventy thirteen dash one dash one eleven. The goal was to find a highly qualified contractor to furnish, deliver, and install deco floor seamless shower coating system, DFL dash nine fifty to twenty eight areas of the Grant County Detention Center. On November twelfth, twenty twenty four, the evaluation committee came together to discuss the proposal submitted to Marathon Engineering Corporation. It is the recommendation of the evaluation committee that the contract be awarded to Marathon Engineering Corporation. This is in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars.
And what this is, is it's a shower coating system for the showers in the detention center. And it's a very specialized coating, so I know it seems like a lot of money, but... Okay. Next item W, consideration of award, RFP twenty five zero six, Disaster Recovery Coordinator to High Watermark LLC. I spoke to the commission about this last month. Um, we released an RFP for, um, a firm to manage, um, the EWP project for the flood damage on the Hila and Memphis rivers. We received one, uh, response, and that was High Watermark. And they do have, um, experience and expertise in, um, all things related to water and disaster. And they're actually contracted with the village of Rio Negro and, um, also Leaping County. And so what this will do is, um, allow them to manage those projects and make sure that we get all of those complete. Because I'm not doing a very good job of that. And, um...
You are, but this gets it off your desk.
I need this off my plate. But, um, NRCS has, um, they have promised me that we will be able to use technical assistance dollars to pay for this. So there's two components to the, um, EWP. There's the funding for, um, the construction, um, to repair the damage. And then there's a second, um, pot of dollars that are technical assistance dollars that we can utilize for services like this. So it wouldn't hit our budget. And if they fail to come through with their promise, then we do have, um, some funding that we could use to do this. I'm going to hold them to their promise. I'm sure. But it's much needed because we need to get these projects done.
Questions, Commissioners?
Sounds like a good start.
Okay, thank you.
And lastly, you will have the opportunity on Thursday to give, uh, Commissioners reports. And that concludes your agenda for Thursday.
Thank you. So moving on to, uh, next item is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Medina, do you have a report?
Just want to welcome the new Commissioners. Uh, look forward to working with you guys. Um, I'll be reaching out to you here in the next couple of weeks. I do a quarterly meeting in my district. And, um, I've been asked to invite you guys if you guys want to go and talk. And, and that way people know who you are, and, uh, they may reach out to you for some other, some other avenue. But I look forward to working with you guys. Thank you, guys. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina. Uh, Commissioner Stevens, you have a report?
I just want to say that I feel privileged to be here and be serving the public with such a dedicated group of people. So, um, look forward to earning the public's trust.
Thank you, Commissioner Shelley. Do you have a report?
No, I'm excited to be here. I'm learning a lot, thanks.
Commissioner Flores?
Mr. Chair, uh, fellow Commissioners, thank you. Um, I do have a couple of things, and, uh, I want to thank everyone for their welcome, welcoming of us on, on the board. And, uh, especially thank, uh, Charlene and Amy for setting us up the way you guys have. And it's been very easy to ease into it. Um, our computers, our, our offices, our, um, paperwork, our emails, every, very, very, uh, appreciative of that. And, um, I just wanted to say, and again, I'd be lax in my job as Commissioner, that, um, I want to thank all the constituents that I'm working for, and I am their voice. We are their voice. But there's some issues that I, I do want to bring up, and I, I talked about in my campaign, I'll be very brief, Mr. Chair. But one, one is being healthcare. Healthcare was a big issue when I was going door to door. And I, at some point, me being new to the commission, I got to learn how this process works. But I do want public input. I, I would like to set up, oh, Mr. Chair, obviously with your permission and your help, and with Charlene's help, is I'd like to set up some sort of a public meeting, a town hall meeting, wha- whatever you want to call it. Um, I realize the session is upon us, and I understand it probably be after the session because everything right now is a little chaotic with the session coming up. But there are some, some, some issues, good and bad, that I think the public want us as a commission to hear. And I, I will certainly invite Mr. Whitaker, the C E, CEO, um, to attend, Dr. Fox. I, um, he reached out to me, Mr. Commissioner Medina, uh, I think yesterday, to meet with me, uh, as well. I, I plan to meet with him. But, um, I do think that we're very lucky to have Hila Regional here, being a rural community as we are. But, um, there are, are some, I think, some issues that need to be addressed. And I think the constituents that are listening, the citizens of Grant County, I want you to come out and, and share your stories, good or bad, with us. And again, we'll, we'll set that meeting, um, here pretty quick. I, I don't want it to be an issue that, ah, I, I come on the commission and, and three years later, we're still, I'm still talking about the same thing because I, I dealt with that same issue on, on the school board with armed security guards. And I think that was a, a long, drawn out fight, and it took me six years to get that. But, um, thankfully, thankfully, it happened. But I, I, I understand committees and, and meetings, but at some point in time, we have to just make that decision and jump in and, and deal with the issue at hand. We can't just be, uh, avoiding it. The other issue is, um, is public safety. And I wish the sheriff hadn't left, but I, I do have some questions regarding public safety, especially in our rural communities. Me, you're, you're part of the area of Memphis, Commissioner Medina?
Yes, sir.
Um, especially my, my district, Cliff, Hila, Buckhorn, Mule Creek. I, I think those citizens deserve the same type of public service, police service that we, that live within, closer to the city, that we receive. And they're not getting it. I'm, I'm, I'm just being honest, that's the bottom line. They're not getting it, whether it's a, a lack of, of personnel or, um, I understand there is a, a resident deputy in Memphis and Cliff. However, but that deputy doesn't work twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And we know as first responders, Mr. Medina, that oftentimes, emergency calls don't come in from nine to five, Monday through Friday. But that is an issue that is very near and dear to my heart because I dealt with that issue when I was commander of the state police, is rural policing. And we did have the town hall meetings, and, uh, we listened to the public because they're the ones that we serve. And I want to hear their, their concerns, and I know their concerns, but I want all of us as a commission to hear their concerns. Um, I know there's an issue with, with the sheriff's department handling calls in the mining district. That's been, uh, a, a, a long issue. I hear the radio every day because of my current employment. I, I'm board member on Central Dispatch, I hear the, the issues there. I want to deal with that as a commission and, and bring my knowledge and my solutions to, to you as a commission and you, Charlene, as well as county manager. I just don't want to bring problems, I, I want to bring solutions with these problems. And I already addressed the code enforcement issue, as we all have concerns about that. That is a, a big issue, and we're, we're moving forward with that. The last thing I want to add, Mr. Chair, is I recently had a meeting with, uh, with a county commissioner from a different county. And I had some good information, and they have a, an authority, it's called the, the County Livestock Loss Authority. And I, I think the information that I received, I, I think it's, it's a good, good, uh, organization that we belong to. It doesn't cost the county anything to, to be on it. They just want some representative from Grant County to, to be on that organization because all it does, and especially again, in, in, uh, I know there's ranchers everywhere in Grant County, but more so in my district, is that it helps the ranchers get compensation for a loss from a predator. And, uh, it's their livelihood. And, and they, these ranchers go out and they don't realize that they've lost a cow maybe for, for six months after the fact. And, and, and I get that from talking to my commissioner, my fellow commissioner, uh, Shelley here. And I've seen it as hunters, we, we see it, we go out there and you see a kill, and you're wondering how long has it been here. But someone has to pay for that cow. And I think a lot of times, i- in my experience, ranchers just take it as a loss and it's part of business. But I think now that we have this, uh, program that will compensate a rancher, and they're working on certain language right now, um, to make it easier for, for compensation. And it deals with education, it deals with education that just helps everybody out, ev- everybody on both sides of the aisle. But I, I, um, the livestock authority commit, consists right now, Mr. Chair, of, uh, Captrons, Sierra, and Socorro County. A, a lot of ranches in that, those three, uh, counties. They have, um, I think it'd be beneficial for us to be part of that. Again, I don't know the process of, of getting that started, but I, I, I want to bring it up in my first meeting. And I would certainly, um, agree to serve on, on that authority if the commission wishes and, and represent Grant County there. But again, um, the questions I have for the sheriff, I'll, I'll bring up on Thursday. But thank you for, for all of you. As Commissioner Stevens said, it, we're honored and privileged to be up here, and I hope to, to be the voice and do my best for, for Grant County. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can get you the information on the Livestock Loss Authority. That actually originated in Sierra County when I was there. So I can get you the information on that. And then also, um, I will also start sending you the updates that I'm receiving from Game and Fish in regards to releases that are happening in Grant County. So, um, it ties in together, so I will start sharing that information with you as well.
And how do we get a commissioner on there?
It's an appointment, just like you do everything else. So we have to agree to join, it's a joint powers agreement. Um, so I can visit with the attorney, get the information, um, and then we can present that to you and it's a formal agenda item for you to consider. And perhaps maybe we could get, um, the commissioner you, which commissioner did you speak with?
Uh, Commissioner Ford.
So we could either get, um, you know, that commissioner to come give you or the attorney that's, um, helping facilitate that. Um, Sierra County is actually a fiscal agent for that. So we can get you that information and put it on as a future agenda item.
Thank you for that information. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Just, uh, first is, I want to welcome our Commissioners, our new Commissioners. You know, this is, uh, uh, exciting to guy, to have you guys here, and, and the questions that were asked were, were great questions. Um, I really look forward for all us five working together and getting what we need to get done for our citizens and employees and supporting our county manager, uh, to head in the right direction. So I want to thank you guys, and I really appreciate you guys for that. The other thing is, I want to congratulate our clerk. She was, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, elect for a while, now she's our, our clerk, so congratulations. And, and thank you for being here, making our meetings legal, so I appreciate you. Um, just a couple of things here, signing of paperwork. We've had in the past where Commissioners run off after regular meetings. And here it goes back to Christie or somebody trying to track them down, call you in to sign something. Um, just make sure that we stick around, sign everything. Amy will double check for us because it, and I know I forgot to sign a couple of things. And you're gonna have to make time out of your day, come, come back in and sign things. Um, Director's reports, I really appreciate them. I'd ask Charlene Sordid to try to get you guys, that the Director reports aren't going to be as long as they were today, but try to get you as much as we can on the same page because you're gonna find out that things are gonna just start moving here, boom, boom, boom. And trying to give you a little bit of a heads up as to where they're at, what they're doing, and, and what their responsibilities are. At the end of the day, they're, they're really, uh, our county managers and boys. But, uh, you know, if you need anything, let our county manager know or, or our deputy county manager to help you out with things there. Um, you know, the only other thing, well, Charlene, do the new Commissioners have a list of our I C I P?
No, not yet, but I will give them the packet that we presented at Prospectors. And so it will have the complete I C I P, the projects that we presented, um, what was submitted for Capitol Alley. So we will send... So we will send all five of you that packet.
Just send, don't send it to me, I, I have mine. But just so you guys know what we were voted on, what was voted on by the last Commissioners, we do need to have some of these projects, we're going to need to, when we're up there in Santa Fe, advocate for that. And at least you guys know where, where we're at and what was voted. And here, probably, I don't know, what, August, somewhere in there, we start looking at a, a new list and moving and doing that. But for now, you guys came in, it's already been approved and doing all that, so you guys can look at that. I could told you, we have asked our county manager to put, to, to put an executive session on. So I don't know how long that's going to last. So we have executive sessions, sometimes our meetings go a little longer. So just so you're aware of it, February, we'll, we'll have that on there. I think that's it. Just, you know, we saw on our agenda, the likes of Chair, I would be, I would really appreciate your support to be Chair at least one more year. So, you know, I'd, I'd really appreciate that. And we can go from there, but I am interested in that position for at least one more year, so thank you. And do you guys have anything else? This is your moment here before I put the gavel down and we're out of here. Nope?
Just a question, will we have an opportunity to, to talk or plan for when we are in Santa Fe, like a strategy?
You know, what I found the biggest strategy and the most, my talking points when you go into Santa Fe to talk to some of our legislators is sitting down with our county manager. And because of all the discussions that have been had, even probably Mr. Holigene, and letting you know this is why, this is what we needed for. And that way you know exactly what, what we do. The packet has a lot of that information, doesn't it?
Agent Johnson, I can explain further individually what our process is and how we tackle things at each session. And a lot of times, it'll be in the middle of the session and we'll bring things to you to ask for you to support or oppose or, but going in, you will know exactly as far as a capital outlay, outlay perspective and some other initiatives that are important to not only Grant County, but counties as a whole. And that will be in that packet that we send you. But please call me if you have any questions, concerns, do you understand something? My door is always open, stop in, call me, and I'll be happy to guide you as best I can.
Anything else, Commissioners? Okay, leading adjournment.